Good evening. My name is Sandra Fritz and I'm the Chairperson of the Shrewsbury School Committee. Welcome to our meeting of June 7th. Tonight's meeting is being broadcast live on Selco Channels 29 and 329, and streamed live on Shrewsbury Media Connections website. First on the agenda is public participation. No one has asked to address the committee this evening. If anybody wishes to do so in the future at this part of our meeting, you can contact us at schoolcommittee@shrewsbury.k12.m a.us. Next is Chairperson and Members' Report. Does anyone have anything this evening?
I can just really, really quick, I just want to note a huge thank you to all of our educators, administrators, PTOs for the various end-of-year celebrations. We talk a lot about the high school. That's obviously a really important one. But I know there's been field day activities and pride weeks and all sorts of spirit events, and that certainly is bringing a lot of joy in our house. And so I just want to thank everybody, particularly a lot of those volunteers who are helping to make a lot of those things happen as they're bringing a lot of joy. And I appreciate it. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. I'd like to congratulate the class of 2023. We've just gone through what we call our fun time. A lot of great events. Graduation was a week ago tomorrow. So it was just really nice to see such a great class and a lot of accomplishments and students going on to do really good things. And that's why we do what we do. That's kind of like that purpose for us. And I also really want to thank Shrewsbury Media Connection, Mark Serra, Liz Poplowski, and everyone else who helped us last week at graduation. It was very hot and they were on the field setting up a long time before we even got there. So a huge thank you to SMC. And the last thing I would just like to note, we're having a lot of student recognition tonight. And we did have a parent reach out. And we'd also like to let the viewers know and anybody here tonight that the Shrewsbury High School Boys Crew Team, the U- make sure I'm saying this right, the U-17 boat, they are down in Sarasota, Florida. They're going to be racing in a national competition, which is a huge success for them to get to that level. It hasn't happened in a long time. And I believe their first race is tomorrow. So we're waiting to hear how they do. So congratulations to the High School Boys Crew Team that is down in Florida. And I'll turn it over to Dr. Sawyer.
Thank you, Ms. Fritz. I certainly also want to congratulate all the members of the class of 2023 who are now Shrewsbury High School alumni. It was a terrific graduation and for, as was mentioned in this previous meeting, but a number of people have talked to me about just how well all of the different end-of-year events were run at the high school. There's a lot of student leadership that's evident, but the hard work that the administrative team at the high school does behind the scenes to make sure those go smoothly and that they're done. They're always first-class events and recognitions and ceremonies. And we had a wonderful evening for graduation, especially once it cooled down a little bit. But everyone was, did a terrific job and congratulations to our graduates. I also want to share some special news. Yesterday, the Massachusetts Special Olympics brought a leg of what they call their final leg of their torch run. There is going to be the annual Summer Games will be happening in Boston soon. And they are carrying a torch from community to community. They reached out and asked whether or not we'd be willing to host one of their stops. And Mr. Kelly and Ms. Birak, the principals at Sherwood and Oak respectively, were here this evening, arranged for all of our Sherwood and Oak students who are both Unified Champion Schools, have been for a couple of years, to be out on the grounds. The torch run is a joint effort between a variety of police personnel across Massachusetts as well as Special Olympics athletes. And they cheered them onto the Sherwood campus initially. They came over and then we had some of our own Unified Athletes from the high school and middle school help with a relay leg around the Oak Track, followed by some speakers and a ceremony. And at that ceremony, I was really proud that the Massachusetts Special Olympics presented us as, with the recognition as a Special Olympics Unified Champion School District, which is, we're one of now only 15 districts in the state that have earned that recognition. That's because now as of this spring, thanks to all five of our elementary K-4 schools reaching their goals, now all nine of our schools are Unified Champion Schools. And so we're therefore Unified Champion District. And we're very happy to share that news with the community today. We're very proud of the cultures of inclusion and belonging that we've created to meet the criteria, which is substantial from the Special Olympics. And I want to thank all of our leaders and staff members, families, and of course, our students for making that a reality for us. So we have a nice banner. There'll be some smaller banners that'll go to the individual school offices. But we're really pleased that, to earn that recognition. And one special shout-out too, that one, some of our students carried a plastic torch. The actual flame was carried by a police officer and also jointly from town, also jointly with Ryan Dixon, who is a graduate of Shrewsbury High School, who recently, just the other night, was inducted into the Massachusetts Special Olympics Hall of Fame for all his competitions over the years. And those of you who know Ryan know he's known as the Mayor of Shrewsbury, one of the more gregarious members of our community. And really pleased and proud for him to really shine as an alum of our school district and the Special Olympics program that our Parks and Recreation Program in the town has had for many years. And now as well, he's a big supporter of our unified program as well. So congratulations and job well done by everyone. And that is Superintendent's Report this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Sawyer. Our first time scheduled appointment this evening is under student recognition. We are going to be recognizing our state science and engineering fair winners. Shrewsbury High School Grade 10 student Ayesha Nagaridi received a first-place award at the 2023 Massachusetts Science and Engineering Fair for her project, "Talk To Me," an application that better detects and handles suicidal situations on social media through ML. We also have Oak Middle School Grade 8 student Nichelle Vinegar. She received a Cabot Grand Prize Award for her project, "Removing Nitrogen and Phosphorus from Water for the Prevention," and I hope I say this right, "Utrofication." And I'll have to find out what that is. And Oak Middle School Grade Student Anush Nikumba, he is not with us this evening, but he received also a Cabot Spotlight First Place Award for her, excuse me, her project, "Charge," which is capturing heat and regenerating electricity through thermoelectric generators. So I think we're going to start, if everybody's coming up, I'm not sure how we're doing it. If you want to do it in two groups.
Why don't we maybe have our high school.
High school first.
Ayesha come up first and with Mr. Wiscosie, and she can take us through her project.
You could start getting, see if you're able to connect.
Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you so much for having us. Dave Wiscosie, Director of the Science and Engineering Department. Here to introduce Ayesha, who is currently in taking research methods with Catherine Phillips, who guided her through the process of her science fair project. So the school fair was conducted in February, and we select 12 projects to advance to the regional fair. At the regional fair, projects that place at the regional fair are then able to advance to the state fair. So Ayesha placed third at the regional fair, and that takes place in March. And then the state fair was conducted at MIT in May, and that's where she earned first place. So I'll turn it over to her and allow her to tell you what she did.
Yeah, so my name is Ayesha. And so my project this year was called "Talk To Me." And it's an application that detects suicidal intention on social media through machine learning. So to truly understand the purpose of this project, we need to first go over the idea of suicide in our community. So suicide is a leading cause of death in numerous demographics. And in addition to this, it causes over 800,000 deaths worldwide every single year. So it's clearly a major issue that our community is faced with, so this project aims to help solve it. So moving on to my background research, this mainly, once again, revolved around the idea of suicidality. So one important thing I would like to highlight is that suicide is a spectrum. So there are five main levels of risk. This includes supportive, indicator, ideation, behavior, and attempt. And it's really important that we acknowledge and understand that suicide is a spectrum because the action that we should take is correspondent to that level of risk that is outputted by this spectrum. If these two don't correspond with one another, then oftentimes the situation can get a lot worse. So taking this in mind, social media completely disregards it. And we see this especially with large platforms such as Twitter, in which when you report someone as suicidal on Twitter, then what happens is that Twitter locks that person's account for a period of time until they delete that tweet. However, no matter where you are on the spectrum, that's extremely the wrong place and sort of action to take. Because when you lock a person's account, you're telling them that this is no longer an outlet you can use to speak out. And especially at a time when someone is probably suicidal, that's not what you want to be telling them. In addition to this, in their mind, they're now thinking that when I reach out, there's going to be a negative impact. So the idea that social media is currently spreading about suicidality when they use their platform is simply detrimental to suicidal people at this point in time. So once again, this project aims to help solve that as well. So for my procedure, the first part of my project was creating machine learning models. So machine learning is the idea of a machine being able to, once you input in data, then based on that data, create patterns, et cetera. And therefore, when new data is inputted into it, create predictions based off of it. So I created five different machine learning models. And then I chose one machine learning model based on a bunch of different metrics that was the best machine learning model. Then I took that machine learning model and then implemented it into an iOS application that was then my final product. So my data analysis, my data analysis is related to choosing that best model out of the five models that I created. So each model represents a different mathematical algorithm. So the final model that I ended up choosing was something called a Support Vector Machine Model. And that is an algorithm that I ended up choosing because it had the highest accuracy with an accuracy of 92%. So the final product is an app, and here's a quick demo of it. So this is the application itself, and it's called "Talk To Me." So in the first screen, you see just like a quick little disclaimer and also a text box. So the user can first off, input whatever text they want into, directly into this text box. Or if they want to, they can also upload a screenshot. So for example, you can upload a screenshot of a tweet. And then you can press this "Convert to Text" button, and it'll convert it to text. And then you press "Continue." And then this is where the machine learning algorithm is working. So it is likely that this person is talking about suicide. If the machine learning algorithm thinks that the person is not talking about suicide based on what's inputted, it'll say that. In addition to this, it also goes the extra level of not just determining whether the person is suicidal or not, but also determining the level of risk they currently are at. And that's with the risk form. So based on how you answer a series of questions, so for example, yes, no, no, a level of risk will be outputted. So in this case, it's a low-medium risk, which is ideation. And then when you click "More Info &amp; Next Steps," it'll tell you just what this means, how you can help. And it'll give you two options in this case. The first is how to act as a suicidal caregiver. Now, when I talk about acting as a suicidal caregiver, this means when you're talking to someone who is probably suicidal. Now, I created this page mainly because a lot of people are in scenarios where they need to talk to these suicidal people. However, they need to understand how to respond in a really educative, informative way that really makes sure that they're helping these people rather than hurting them. So these are a bunch of different scenarios that someone may be experiencing when they're talking to these type of people. And it also explains how to respond to them. And another option is also calling a suicidal hotline. And if you go back and answer the risk form in a different way, now let's say yes, yes, no, this is now a medium risk, which is behavior. And if you click "More Info &amp; Next Steps," now the actions change as well. So now the only option that's available is calling a suicidal hotline, since this is the only action that corresponds to this level of risk. Finally, if you were to go back and click yes, 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 this would be a high risk, which is attempt. And if you click "More Info &amp; Next Steps," now the only option is calling 911 or emergency services. So yeah, that's the entire application. Thank you.
Wow. Comments, questions?
That's amazing. I'm sitting here, first of all, this is such a topic that I'm thinking about what I was doing in grade 10. And that was like learning choreographed to like Backstreet Boys. You have just put together, this is amazing. What inspired you to choose this particular topic? I know that there's the background, but what for you drove you to choose this as your project?
Yeah, so this was mainly like a social and personal thing. So I've always really been interested in impacting the healthcare industry through computer science. And then so also recently, especially with the recent years, there's been a lot more awareness for mental health. But I feel like I haven't really seen a lot of computer science or artificial intelligence being used in the mental health realm to help create solutions. So this was definitely something I wanted to try out and sort of combine two topics that I really liked and was really relevant today's time.
I just wanted to comment, I love that you provided the options for people. Like if you have a friend that may be going through a situation, and then how you can talk to someone and the different kind of scenarios that you may be presented with. It's just, how did you come up with that and find all that information to kind of, you know, rank these things and kind of come up with like a little blurb about how to respond?
Yeah, so this was mainly a lot through my background research. So there are a lot of good websites and sources out there, such as Suicide Is Different and the Columbia Suicide Severity Risk Scale, that talk about how suicide is a spectrum. And they also really descriptively tell you how each level on the spectrum works and information about that. So I took that background research from different studies that have been conducted as well about the suicide risk scales, and also just how to act based on where you are on the risk scale.
Curious about the amount of time that this took you to put together from beginning 10, like from the time that you thought about the topic to the time that you presented it at the fair?
Yeah, so I first thought about this project last summer. So the first, that summer block was, since I couldn't actually create implementation itself for this project, because the science fair requires you to do it like starting September, October, this school year. This summer, I spent actually learning machine learning. So I worked under a professor, et cetera, and I learned the basics of machine learning. And based on what I learned over this summer, I was then able to implement this application. And the entire process took, like where I am currently, I'm still working on it. But where I am currently, I would say it took one semester-long of school. So from like September to February was when I presented. And that's also because I take research methods, so the project kind of had to be done by then.
Thank you.
A question, so you just mentioned you worked with a professor. Was that at a local college? Like, how did that?
Yeah, so that was through a online program. So that was, COVID was still going on a little bit back then. So yeah, that was through online.
Excellent. And one of the other things I was thinking of, the company I work for, we have Mental Health Allies now. So it's a program, anyone can sign up for, some training. And we do have social workers that we can talk to if somebody would come to us. But this app, and it would be a tool for anyone to use. And, you know, someone who may not have all of the background. So is that something you're thinking of, like the purpose of this tool going forward in corporate setting, medical health setting? Is that what you're planning?
Yeah, so for the future of this application, right now it's not on the App Store, but I'm working towards publishing this on the App Store this summer. I'd also love to get a patent on this. And also, actually, through the science fair, they posted something on Facebook or LinkedIn or whatever about like getting first in this project. And then a nonprofit reached out to me, and currently I'm working with that nonprofit. We're still in the beginning stages of it. But we're looking about how this application in specific can be used. They have volunteers, so it can, how they can train their volunteers with this application, and how volunteers can use this as a tool when they talk to people who may be suicidal.
Yeah, excellent, because it's that ready tool that you have right there for somebody. And my other question is, if you're at the state level, do you go on to a national level?
Yeah, so there is international, which is ISAF, International Science and Engineering Fair. But the International Science and Engineering Fair depends on how you place in the regional level. So only if you get first, and I think if there, you have to compete. Otherwise, also if you get second, then you can move on to ISAF.
Okay, thank you.
Just really quick, just to confirm the, I'm thrilled to hear. We're all super impressed. This is great. I mean, and it's so very relevant for our community, certainly. That bears repeating. But the hope then is for the end user for the app is somebody who sees something and thinks this maybe is concerning, but helping them to figure out. And so is your, is your hopeful user, I guess, do you think of it as, you know, peers on social media? Or a parent who maybe sees something on a phone and doesn't know what to use it? Or is there a teacher, maybe, who sees something? Certainly, schools get alerted often, and we're trying to figure out what to do about, about some things that might be concerning. Who's your hopeful target audience, if there's one?
So there's a lot of target audience. So anyone pretty much can use this application. But when I was first building it, it was mainly targeted towards, like you said, like a friend or peer that sees something that their friend may have said online, and they thought, oh, I'm a little worried about this. And then they use this to better communicate with their friend and get their friend help. But that too can also be used by the friend themselves. That's a little less common though, because usually suicidal people themselves don't want to reach out themselves. But in addition to that, I also learned that it can be used in the nonprofit setting with like volunteers, et cetera, that I'm currently doing. And then it can also be used in, I was thinking like the clinical setting. So there's something called the Columbia Suicide Severity Risk Scale that I mentioned before, and it's currently being used in a clinical setting. And this is sort of like an automized tech version of that. So it also has potential in the clinical setting as well.
Very impressive. Dr. Sawyer?
I just want to thank Ayesha for this extraordinary work that she's done and congratulate her on the recognition she's received, obviously well-earned and deserved. And again, her teacher, Ms. Phillips, I believe you said, was your teacher in research methods. And it's a program that continues to provide students with really excellent ways to be mentored by one of our own faculty, obviously taught in terms of both their math and science classes. And, you know, certainly, while we have a tradition of recognizing, you know, first and grand prize winners here at the school committee level, Mr. Wiscosie communicated, you know, a long list of students who were recognized from the 12 who moved forward to regionals and certainly beyond that, and people who did very well at the state level with some really innovative projects. So we really appreciate that we have this opportunity for our students and so glad that Ayesha took such great advantage of it as well. So congratulations. At this time, why don't we have Ayesha come up and shake the committee's hand and receive a certificate? How about a round of applause?
Thank you. And next, we will move on to Nichelle.
And let me introduce, when Nichelle comes up, her, the Design Lab teacher at Oak Middle School, Jerry Mullerella, and who has been a longtime science teacher in the eighth grade at Oak. And then a few years ago, transitioned to being our Design Lab teacher. Where in 30-day cycle, students get to explore a variety of innovative design types of hands-on projects there. But for a number of years, Mr. Mullerella has also run the Science and Engineering Fair for our Oak Middle School students. So I'll allow him and Nichelle to introduce her project.
Thank you, Dr. Sawyer. Good evening. So before we get to Nichelle's project, I did want to give you a quick overview of Anushka's project, because she wasn't able to attend tonight. And again, so similar to the high schools, we have a science fair club where I can send 10 students to the regional fair. This year, we had nine students advance to the state fair, and we had five students placed at the state fair. Nichelle came in, she was a grand prize winner. She came in first overall. And Anushka came in, she received the other grand prize. It was the first time ever that we actually took home the top two spots at the state fair. So it was pretty, pretty impressive. So as far as Anushka, her project, as you mentioned earlier, was called "Charge: Capturing Heat and Regenerating Electricity." And it really focused on harvesting sort of wasted heat energy that is given off from a lot of different devices and equipment, such as internal combustion engines, like hot water tanks, things like that. And she developed a prototype solution that used thermoelectric generators and heat sinks to generate enough of a voltage to make a continuous power source that could then be used to sort of power different devices at home. So that was her project. Unfortunately, she wasn't able to, to attend this evening. So I will now turn it over to Nichelle to present her wonderful project.
Okay, thank you. So before starting, I'd like to thank Dr. Sawyer and Mr. Mullerella and the entire school committee for allowing me to present my project here today. So imagine you're starving, suffocating, and being poisoned all at once. Doesn't sound very fun, right? Unfortunately, this is the reality for thousands of manatees living off the coast of Florida. This is due to harmful algal bloom known as red tide, as you can see here. Now, red tide is a harmful algal bloom, which is a form of utrophication, which you actually said perfectly. So this is basically an overgrowth of algae, specifically dinoflagellates and cyanobacteria. Now, these both secrete toxins, deplete water of oxygen, and block sunlight from phytoplankton, which cause all of those effects that I spoke of earlier. In fact, manatees aren't the only creatures impacted by them, with almost anything living in their vicinity being harmed by them. So as someone whose personal favorite animal is the manatee, I'm quite passionate about this issue, and I wanted to find the root cause of it. After doing extensive research, I found that the main sources of harmful algal blooms are an excess of nitrate and phosphate, which are caused by agricultural and sewage runoff. This runoff makes its way into freshwater lakes and ponds, which travels down rivers and estuaries, and finally into the ocean, where it causes harmful algal blooms like red tide. Now, from this, I then began researching ways to remove nitrate and phosphate from water. And from my research, I found two main technologies. This, which is alum, and this is calcium bentonite clay, both of which are currently being used to remove nitrate and phosphate from water. So after identifying the two chemicals I would be using, I spoke to Ms. Fisher, the Director of the Department of Natural Resources in the town of Mashpee, who gave me some very insightful advice on both of these chemicals, as well as the issues that the town of Mashpee is having with their own harmful algal blooms. After this, I conducted my testing, in which I filled five bottles like these with stream water, which I then added soil to, to simulate agricultural runoff, as well as increase the nitrate and phosphate levels. From this, I then added my combinations of both of these treatments and waited six to seven hours, after which I would measure the change in the nitrate and phosphate to show the overall efficacy of the removal by the combination of these two treatments. So actually, after conducting my testing, I found that two of the combinations I had tested were actually able to show a significant improvement on either of these treatments used individually, with one of the combinations showing an improvement in nitrate and phosphate removal, and one of the combinations showing a better ability to keep the pH at the same level throughout the experiment, which showed that if this treatment was used in a real environment, it wouldn't wreak havoc on the ecosystem by changing the pH level. After collecting my results, I then spoke once again to Ms. Fisher, and also to Ms. Horn, a research assistant at the Woods Hole Oceanographic Institute, and Professor Yang from the University of Minnesota. I received some very insightful feedback from both of them. And Professor Yang even invited me to conduct further research at her lab in the University of Minnesota. From their feedback, I actually conducted a second iteration of my testing, which was able to eliminate some of the errors I saw in the first round. So based on my own calculations, as well as some of the expert advice, I was able to create this treatment evaluation matrix, which shows the nitrate removal and phosphate removal capabilities of each treatment, as well as the cost per pound of each treatment, and its environmental impact, which I measured in the amount of change in pH I observed with each treatment. Based on this, I hope that towns are able to use this data if they are looking into using a treatment such as this one. Additionally, I'd like to address that although my treatment is more of a preventative measure for this solution, each and every one of us can help stop harmful algal blooms at the very root of the issue. So urea-based fertilizers, rooting loam, and synthetic chemical fertilizers all contain extremely high levels of nitrate and phosphate, which, as I mentioned, are the main contributors to harmful algal blooms. Now, by being more conscious in our usage of these fertilizers, we're able to limit the risk of anywhere from 30 to 50% of these fertilizers entering the water column and thus causing harmful algal blooms. To spread awareness about this within my own neighborhood, I actually passed out door hangers like these ones, which I can give to all of you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
So the idea of handing out these door hangers was so that people in my own local community would be able to, as I said, be more conscious of the fertilizers they're using and change to alternative fertilizers that contain lower concentrations of nitrate and phosphate. And finally, going forward, I'd like to test my treatments on more accurate equipment in a lab, whether it be with Professor Yang or someone a bit closer to home than Minnesota. By doing this, I'll be able to collect the data that's accurate enough for me to give towns very accurate data that they can use to decide if this treatment is fit for their harmful algal blooms and their excess nutrients. And finally, I do hope this is used in the future in some communities to prevent harmful algal blooms, to create a better life for the sea life, and save the manatees. Thank you.
Thank you. Again, very impressive, and that you're in eighth grade and you just presented like this. Wonderful. Questions or comments? Ms. Effenin?
Thank you. I'm very impressed. And I, let me ask, let me ask a question to make sure I understand. Thank you. I'm very impressed and I, let me ask a question to make sure I understand. The goal to reduce the, the goal that you were trying to test for was changing the pH levels or avoiding changing the pH levels. So we want to treat the nitrogen that's causing the problem, but we don't want to change the pH at the same time. Am I saying that right?
Yeah, so basically the idea that is that this treatment, alum, is actually used very commonly, but it has an incredibly low pH. So when it's applied without a proper buffer, it can actually cause fish kills which many towns in the Cape have seen because they didn't apply this treatment with a proper buffer. And the calcium bentonite clay is actually basic. So by using both of them in combination, I was able to allow the clay to serve as a buffer while also being a treatment in and of itself.
So I guess my very simple question is, have you enrolled in research methods at the high school? Okay, wonderful. I hope that you continue this work. I do know, I was a chemistry student at Holy Cross, there are local schools that we can, we should be able to find you some connections to in order to get into a lab locally. But just incredible work and I'm sure you can imagine lots of other ways to kind of test both pH levels and also what else is happening, right? If you're, if we're not changing the pH level with some of these substances. So I hope that you continue on and really impressive work. Thank you.
Congratulations. This is incredible presentation and I also like how you incorporated a community service aspect into it as well. So just job well done.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for the presentation and congratulations. I'm so impressed with like also the depth of research and how you went out and found sources to interview. How were your research, like how were these interviews conducted? Were they like video chat, phone, or?
Yeah, I did them mainly over Zoom. So Ms. Fisher, I found from a New York Times article on the issues that the town of Mashpee is having with harmful algal blooms. And the other two, Ms. Horn and Professor Yang, I found from their respective colleges' databases.
Yeah, no, very impressive. And just your delivery and how you presented to us, it felt like you were teaching a class. So congratulations and thank you so much.
Thank you.
Congratulations. That was a wonderful presentation. What do you want to do like past Shrewsbury? What, like, do you want to go into marine biology? Do you, like, what is the end goal for you?
Um, I do have an interest in marine biology, but I'm also interested in soft robotics and that kind of field. So I'm keeping my options open.
I don't think you have to worry. I think you're gonna have a lot of options as you move forward. And that was my question too. You know, what were you thinking? You're only in eighth grade, but you've got quite a smart head on your shoulders there doing all this. So very, very impressive. And when my pool's green, I might call you. But thank you. Dr. Sawyer?
Thank you, Nichelle. Wonderful presentation and project. We talk a lot about our Shrewsbury portion of a graduate and of course, the focus is on by the time students graduate, but it's really our responsibility where we're trying to help our students develop a variety of skills over the course of their entire preschool through grade 12 experience. And certainly as an eighth grader, I think this project is an example essentially of all six major areas that we say. It's certainly critical thinking and content. It certainly is innovative. It certainly focusing and resilience in terms of, you know, going after this issue. Collaboration and communication with adults in the real world of work as well as, which I shouldn't say, I just said that, it was in the adult world of work. If you listen to my graduation remark, you know why. But in communicating, you know, through Zoom, taking advantage of tools, be able to learn from experts. Citizenship beyond Shrewsbury and engaging with a real world problem. And then leadership and I think the community service piece as well is leading, trying to lead and create some change in a community that can benefit. You know, hopefully people could have green lawns but also help not exacerbate this problem. So kudos to you. I think you're demonstrating all these things that we want for our students. I know it's a lot of hard work and that you've put into it. And thank you to Mr. Mullerella for your guidance and I know your family as well, families of both of our students, a lot of support, of course. So with that, how about a round of applause for Nichelle? Come on up, Nichelle, and you can shake the committee's hand.
Congratulations, Eric.
Nice job, Nichelle.
Congratulations, very impressive. Extremely impressive.
Well, congratulations.
Okay, next we have another student recognition. We are going to move on to our Shrewsbury High School esports state champions and state finalists. The Shrewsbury High School esports team enjoyed yet another successful year. The League of Legends SHS Gatekeepers team won the MSAA Esports Fall '22 and Spring '23 state championships. And the Rocket League SHS CEOs team finished as MSAA Esports Fall '22 and Spring '23 state finalists. So we have some students here along with their advisor. It's Mr. Krefting, am I saying it properly? SHS Science and Engineering Teacher. So if you'd like to come up and tell us about yet another win. And once you get settled, I'll have you introduce yourselves for those people watching at home.
Yeah, I'm Nick Krefting, the aforementioned science and engineering teacher at the high school. Callan, you want to go ahead?
I'm Callan Fitch. I'm a freshman on the League of Legends esports team at the high school.
I'm Steven Hu. I'm a graduating senior.
I'm John. I'm also a senior and I'm on the league team.
I'm Isaac Wolfis. I'm a sophomore and I'm also on the league team.
I'm Alex Anderson. I'm a recently graduated senior on the Rocket League team.
Welcome.
Yeah. So this year was an extremely exciting year for us. We got to go to Foxborough, Patriot Place, and actually play at the, what is it called? The Helix Esports facility there. It was very fun. They got to play on a stage, actually in the same room as the team that they're playing against, which is very rare when you have a sport like this. And it's kind of fun to imagine, you know, 30 years ago or whatever, people were competing on Pac-Man arcade games trying to get the high score. And now there's a huge industry about competitive online multiplayer games. And that's what we're doing at Shrewsbury. Requires a very high level of communication, of teamwork. They're learning leadership skills. They're reinforcing their ability to think strategically about a situation as a team and then moment to moment to make very quick decisions and then execute on that at a very high level. And I think it's going to serve them for the rest of their lives, even if they don't end up going into the, you know, million dollar industry that is esports. I think they're, they've shown themselves to be extremely good at this sort of thinking and strategizing. So I applaud them. It's been a blast to watch them go.
Absolutely. Would any of the students like to talk about the recent win that you've had?
Yeah, sure. I'll just speak a little bit about how it's been for me as a senior. So I didn't actually play in, since like Callan started his freshman year, I joined the team when I was a junior, right when I was wrapping up high school. So I just jumped into it. And I think what stood out to me a lot about League of Legends and just playing games with other people is how easy it is to make connections and how easy it is to make new friends. For example, at the beginning of the year, we had no idea what we were going to do with the team. We were missing members. And Callan, a freshman, was emailing a senior about joining the team. And it's as easy as that. We made a connection. We played a couple games, felt it out, and now we're friends. We're
Best friends.
Yeah, it's just, I've met a lot of people that I don't think I ever would have, or it's definitely not in my comfort zone to talk to people that I just just met. And being able to do that through a setting where it's really friendly, really social. For example, Yara wasn't able to come today, but meeting her and making friends like that was been really cool and really fun. So.
Excellent. Excellent. Anyone else want to make any comments?
I just want to say, you know, I've been playing League of Legends since I was in like fourth grade. It's been a part of my life for a while, but I always played by myself. None of my friends wanted to play with me, but you know, I went to high school, I joined the esports team and it's been a lot of fun really, playing with other people. It's just, you know, every Tuesday when we had our games, just so happy to go into the school. You know, I actually made every Tuesday a lot better. Got to play League of Legends games every day. It's pretty fun. And really, being on the stage and getting to have that competitiveness on this level was really fun for me and really sad to see the seniors go. But we're gonna have a lot more years of winning, I hope.
Very good. Any comments or questions to the committee? Mr. Wedsley?
Congratulations. I feel like esports team is here annually giving us a report, but it's just you're winning constantly, which is pretty awesome. And this state competition hasn't been around for that long, right?
Maybe the fifth year or something.
Yeah, fifth year. And I mean, Shrewsbury's been in the finals pretty much almost every year, right?
Yep.
Yeah. And so you've got three graduating seniors?
Three graduating on the League of Legends team, two graduating from the Rocket League team, and one graduating from our Smash Brothers team.
And you have some prospects?
We have some rebuilding.
Okay. Expect to see you all next year. Congrats.
I would love to know, can you, I'm not a video game person, so talk to me like I'm not one. How do you play as a team and explain, explain what you mean when you're saying you're working on strategy and collaboration? Maybe one of the students can explain what that looks like. Because I do, I'm a little bit in the Pac-Man generation, right? And so if that's not it, tell me what it, tell me what it actually looks like.
I would say John and Steven are the main strategizers for League of Legends. And maybe Alex, you can speak to Rocket League, how that works. But.
Do I speak? I mean, for strategizing and stuff, okay. I apologize for not speaking formally. But I think for the game, there's a certain objective. And in order to get to that objective, the team has to like work together. You can't play by yourself. So especially against other schools and other teams that have planned how to, how to win, we need to think of other ways to go around them. And, you know, that's why connections are very important. We have to work together, find what works, find what doesn't work, and communicate that.
And I think another aspect that comes with team building and communication is there are multiple objectives that happen all at the same time during the game. For example, you might want to go, there's a map and you might be in one section of the map trying for one objective while the other team is going for something else. And the reason why you go for these objectives is because you need to assess how you are in this moment as a team. Are you strong? Are you weak? Are you able to fight the other team? And to pick and choose the objectives that you can take while also getting advantages in other aspects. So I think that's a little more about the strategy.
Just adding on to both of those, there's also five different roles. So we all have different jobs on the team. And so if one person doesn't do their job, then it's hard for the whole team to succeed. So we have to communicate about it.
Can I ask a follow-up?
Of course.
So if you got to play, I imagine then when you're playing against a team virtually, you can all be in the same room. Was it different then when you were all on a stage together because you want to talk to each other, but now they know your strategy? Is that a problem? No?
That's not really a problem because
Why?
You all have
Oh, right. Okay. You've solved for that. All right. Thank you for helping me understand.
They even showed us the game in the audience on a three-minute delay. So everything that was happening, they couldn't look back and see what the other team was doing or anything like that. Very, very professional.
I just, I think I'm really happy this is at the high school, that we're finding lots of different and innovative ways for folks to connect, for folks to build team, for folks to say, yes, I know, I'm a freshman and I know a senior and I'm a senior and I'm friends with a freshman. Whatever we can do to build that and then advance some of our values is great. And I'm super happy you're doing well. Clearly need to go to Patriot's Place next time and understand this a little bit more, but thank you for the explanation.
And congratulations. It's again a frequent flyer. You guys are before us. And I'll never forget when I saw this whole esports thing and I'm like, what is this? I don't understand it. Because I know when my son played video games, I was so happy when he moved out and took the gaming system with him. He was no longer in the family room. But learning about esports and the connection you have, the communication, critical thinking, making decisions, snap decisions are what you're gonna do in your working lives. It's a wonderful thing. And I know when I looked at it in the beginning, I'm like, I can't believe they're playing video games. But, and it sells out big, like, you know, Boston Garden type. It's people have it as careers now. But I like this connection we're seeing between different levels of students. You're coming probably from all different areas, but you're doing this collectively and you're learning really strong critical skills and playing a game that you love. So I think it's just a great thing. I'm glad we're able to do all of these different things and add to the fabric of our high school. So congratulations again. I have a feeling you'll be back next year too. Dr. Sawyer?
I want to congratulate the teams for all the games. Really appreciate Mr. Krefting stepping up to be the advisor slash coach of the program this year. I think the students articulated well what some of the benefits they're gaining from it. In addition, just to companionship and fun and all the things that we want out of any sport, whether it's E or otherwise, we want that sort of team sense and the benefits you get from competing together and the camaraderie and all the things that go with that. So certainly another accomplishment for us to be proud of as a community. And again, we really congratulate you. I know it's a lot of practice, it's a lot of time. And on top of that, we know you're also paying a lot of attention to what you need to do in school and as far as everything else. And congratulations especially to those of you who led as seniors and now graduates. And we'll look forward to others stepping up to be leaders in the future. So congratulations. We do have some certificates for you to recognize you. And for those who couldn't be here tonight, we have some extras for them as well that we can pass along to Mr. Krefting. But if you come up and be recognized by the school committee, how about a round of applause for our
Congratulations.
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 We'll see you again, I'm sure.
Thank you for everything.
Congratulations for this work. Congratulations. All right. These were all the same.
All right.
Thanks a lot.
Thank you. Okay, we're moving on with more student recognition. Next, we're going to recognize our speech and debate state champions. Again, the Shrewsbury High School Speech and Debate Team, another frequent flyers, as we call them, have had a very successful year, including three students who won individual 2023 Massachusetts State Championships. And I'll have the students and their advisor, Mr. Rishitelli, come forward. And once you get settled, if you want to introduce yourselves?
I'm Tricia. I'm a freshman at the high school. I'm part of the team.
I'm Siri Urall. I'm a rising senior at Shrewsbury High School.
I'm Vasu Lakshman and I'm a current sophomore.
And I'm Mark Rishitelli. Thank you for having us. I'll introduce each student a little bit as to what their accomplishments were. And then feel free to ask them any questions you'd like. We're very lucky. We're actually represented by pretty much a cross-section of what the events are that our team competes in, from traditional debate all the way to interpretation and sort of in-between with platform or extemporaneous in the middle. Our first student, Vasu, he traditionally does extemporaneous speaking. However, as a sophomore, he wanted to try public forum debate. So he found a freshman who was willing to be his partner. And they competed a few times and qualified for states. And in the novice division at the state finals, they were octo-finalists. But Vasu was the state champion individual speaker in his division out of 112 debaters in that novice division. I'll let him talk about the resolution itself and the process. Tricia is a freshman and we're also represented well by grade level. Freshmen, sophomore, juniors, rising from there. But Tricia's a freshman. She competes more in reading categories, in prose and poetry reading. And at the state finals, they have a special breakaway final called Novice Oral Interpretation, where they only bring in first-year students to make, the top first-year students to make the final round. And I believe, if I remember correctly, because Tricia was double-entered in both, I believe that the one that came out on top was her poetry. I do remember things from that. And she was the state champion in that novice oral inter-division. Her poetry program, which was a bunch of different poems put together into a 10-minute reading, I think was titled "Perfect Like Me."
Yep.
And I'll let her talk about that as well. And then finally, we have Siri. Siri Urall is our incoming president of the team. She'll be a senior next year. Siri also competes in extemporaneous speaking, but her state championship was in impromptu speaking where basically she's given a topic, a moment- speaking, where basically she's given a topic, momentary preparation, she gives a seven-minute speech or so. It's not surprising that Siri was the state champion this year, considering that last year she was the national runner-up in impromptu speaking. So I think she would have been disappointed if she was not. Her impromptu topic for the state final, final round, I believe, was Carpe Diem.
Yep.
And hopefully, she'll continue to seize the day. She and Vasu and I and nine other students head out on Saturday to our last national competition out in Arizona. But if you have any questions for the students, I think they're, they said they're prepared to answer.
Hey. Any questions or comments for the students?
Just congratulations, not only on the accomplishments presented tonight, but just, you know, Coach always sends us emails about summaries of what's happened at each of the events. So appreciative of the communication and so amazed at the accomplishments of this team. This is another dynasty in Shrewsbury next to the esports team, but this one has been longstanding and just really impressed also with the time and preparation that you put in to what you do. I know we go to many workshops, meetings at, at Shrewsbury High School, and every so often, we see students kind of rehearsing in the hallway. And just, it is, it's just awesome to see your passion for this. So congrats.
Thank you. I just want to make sure, when, when we talk about this, it's frequent flyer. It's always, for years and years, this has been a hallmark of how well our students do in speech and debate. And Mr. Richatelli, we know you're going to be speaking a little later as you're retiring from this role. Thank you for always keeping us updated. And I think the, your joy always came through. You are always telling us how great that these students are doing. And Mr. Palace is no longer with us, so I'll, I'll say what he always said. As a public school, we are competing against other schools who are putting a lot of time, money than, more than we do. And we do just as well or better. And I think it's due to the dedication of the students, your families, and Mr. Richatelli for making this unbelievable program for years at this school. So congratulations. It's always very impressive. I don't know how you do some of it off the top of your head so quickly, but it's extremely impressive. So thank you. Dr. Sawyer.
Oh, I was just going to say, just a quick congratulations. And I think that one of the other strengths of your program is that you, how young you start with the middle school and how you all take a lot of pride in mentoring the younger students and bringing them along. And to have a freshman, a sophomore, and a junior here, it just shows the progression of the program. And just, again, our sincere congratulations.
So I, Mr. Richatelli referenced that you'd be able to share a little bit about each of your performances. Maybe we can go from youngest grade to oldest grade and start with Tricia. Maybe just give a little bit of a summary of what the, what the connection was among the poems that you read and how you made that choice.
Yeah, so in Novice Oral Interpretation, the finals, I did do my poetry piece. And my poetry piece mainly was upon anorexia and eating disorders. And throughout my piece, I had different characters just kind of representing what stereotypes are in eating disorders, what the society says about eating disorders, the ignorance that we have during, when discussing about eating disorders. And I came upon this topic because I did have some friends and like myself, we struggled with a bit of disorder eating during COVID. And I really wanted to spread more, you know, awareness during, about this topic, because some people are really ignorant towards what you say to people that are facing eating disorders. So that was one big thing that I wanted to share, because speech and debate is mainly about sharing your voice and sharing your stories or sharing someone else's story. So that's one thing that I really wanted to share about my story.
Thank you. And maybe, let's hear about the resolution that you had to speak to in debate.
Of course. So our resolution for the month of March and leading into April was should India sign the Artemis Accords? So there are definitely like several factors into it. The Artemis Accords themselves, it's legislation around the moon and how we're really going to go forward, looking at space and how colonization and working together with other nations is going to go about that. But what was so interesting about the resolution itself was it was from India's perspective. And teams could debate whether they wanted to analyze it from India or the world as a whole. And it really allowed for much nuance to occur and many unique arguments to come up. And then responding to those arguments in a strategic manner, because they start off with cases. And then after hearing your opponent's case, you move into rebuttal, which includes parts of extending your case and responding to your opponent's. And then in between these periods, there's also cross-examination, which in my opinion is the best part, to be able to learn more about your opponent's arguments and really analyze some of the fallacies and improve upon your arguments as well.
Thank you. And Siri, in terms of Carpe Diem, what did you come up with on the spot?
Of course. So the full quote was Carpe Diem, seize the day, boys, make your lives extraordinary. And I'd be lying if I said that that was my favorite quote of my three options, but I definitely felt it was something I could talk about. So I began by talking about my switch from my former sport of soccer into cross-country and how it was something that was absolutely terrifying at the time, but proved to be fruitful in the end. Then I moved into a philosopher of our time, Colonel Sanders, the CEO and founder of Kentucky Fried Chicken. And I talked more specifically about how he has failed over 1,000 times in creating the perfect chicken recipe. And although many people didn't know about that, it just shows that rather than letting that go and choosing a different career path, he chose to seize the day every single day. And now his life is certainly extraordinary. And then I moved on to my third and final point, was, which was all about impacting back to my audience and telling them why they, as viewers, should care about my message in the first place. One thing I've always appreciated about impromptu is that it gives you so much space to talk about anything. But at the end of the day, as Tricia previously said, this activity is about connecting to your audience and giving them insight on what they should implement into their own lives. So I have always valued the ability to help my audience reflect on my message as well.
Thank you, Siri. And I, and for those watching, and Mr. Richatelli mentioned that she was the national runner-up in this category last year, and she was kind enough. We have a long tradition of speech and debate, students doing a presentation at our opening day staff assembly, where all the staff of the school district come together the day before the first day for students. And there've been a number of very inspiring performances that I usually say, Mr. Richatelli, here's a topic I'm thinking about, can someone do something with it? And we're always blown away. And last year, she did an impromptu piece for us, and it absolutely just astounded all of our educators and support staff who were in the, assembled in the fieldhouse at Shrewsbury High School. So I'll be looking to, I won't be contacting Mr. Richatelli because he's going to be retired, but do want to let people know that we're pleased that a longtime member of the coaching staff, Gabriel Hopkins, is also an educator, English language educator in our middle school program at Oak, is going to be taking over as the, the lead advisor for speech and debate. And so I will be reaching out to him this summer to see about some students who can hopefully help us out with that again. But again, just remarkable performances. It should be noted that the entire team came in second in the state again. And so a terrific performance by everyone. And as Mr. Wensky mentioned, Mr. Richatelli has kept us updated, and Mr. Bzidlo includes in his newsletters to the community all the various outstanding performances that our students have throughout the year. It's really an extraordinary program. We'll certainly can be congratulating Mr. Richatelli in a little bit with all the rest of our retirees here. But to our three state champions, congratulations. And at this time, why don't we give them a round of applause? If you.
Congratulations.
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 Thank you again to our speech and debate winners. And next, we are going to move on to staff recognition. This year, we have 19 staff members who are retiring after serving us well in the district. And I'll turn it over to Ms. Malone.
Okay, thank you so much. I'm going to sit over here because our retirees are going to stand and speak at that microphone, so I don't want to block anybody's view.
You're good. Very well.
All right. Excellent. So I do want to say that unfortunately, several of our retirees are not well this evening. So they're not all here, but some have given me statements. And I really would like to recognize everybody individually, whether they're here or not. So we've talked before that in combination, these retirees have served the students of Shrewsbury for 463.5 years, and that represents an average of 24.39 years of service in Shrewsbury. And some of them, even on top of that, have educational experience in other districts. So we certainly wish them all a healthy, happy, and fun retirement. So first up, we have administrative assistant Sheila Delarosa has served 12 years in Shrewsbury. She is retiring as a nursing administrative assistant for the district. She's not here, but let's give her a round of applause. We're going to move on to Donna Namiak, who's also unable to come tonight, but she has served 26.5 years in Shrewsbury, and she is retiring as an IT specialist for the district. So I'd like to move on to our paraprofessionals. Fazi Ghazanfarri has served 20 years as a paraprofessional in Shrewsbury, and she is retiring from the Walter J. Patton School. There you are, Fazi. Jill Preneer has served 14 years as a paraprofessional in Shrewsbury. She's also retiring from the Walter J. Patton School. She did give me just a couple of comments. She said that she started in 2010 at Beal, but then she went to Patton the following year. She says, I loved Patton from the beginning and always will. The staff is talented, loving, and devoted to children. We went through an unprecedented ordeal with COVID, with hard work, adjustments, and always humor. Everyone made it work. She feels that she wants to give credit to all the educators that pulled it together during that time, and to all her friends at Patton, you are the best. Pam Thompson has served 19 years as a paraprofessional in Shrewsbury. She is retiring from Parker Road Preschool. She, she said that all of her years of education have been in Shrewsbury at Parker, and she just wants us to know that she loved her time there and felt like she was a part of a family in every sense of the word. So next up, we have Joan Beal. Joan Beal has served 26 years as an educator, with 22 of those years here in Shrewsbury. She's retiring as a fourth-grade teacher from Floral Street School. She is not able to attend this evening, but she said that she enjoyed her years in Shrewsbury and value the wonderful colleagues that she was fortunate to work with at Floral. What she will miss most are the students and their families. Being a part of the education of the many students she had the privilege to teach was very rewarding. She enjoyed getting to know them, both as learners and as people. In retirement, she is most looking forward to spending more time with her three granddaughters, and she wishes a smooth end of the year for all of us. Elizabeth Blash has served 20 years as an educator here in Shrewsbury. She is retiring as a grade five ELA and social studies teacher from Sherwood Middle School. And now we have a few people who are here to speak. First of all, Gary Chalmers. He has served 34 years as an educator here in Shrewsbury. He is retiring as a grade five mathematics and science teacher from Sherwood Middle School, also the president of the Shrewsbury Education Association. And before all of that, he was a Shrewsbury High School graduate, graduating the same year as another retiree this year, Mr. Patrick Collins. Gary.
Thank you for having me here tonight. Over the last 34 years, I've had the honor of working with so many amazing teachers, administrators, paraprofessionals, and support staff here in Shrewsbury. I'm so very thankful for the many positive relationships that I've built. My colleagues have helped me to continue to learn and grow over these years. I'm happy going to work each day, and I know not everyone is fortunate enough to be able to say that. I could not have asked for a better place to have spent my career. Like many of us, I went into teaching because I wanted to make a difference in children's lives. As Barb said, I'm a graduate of Shrewsbury High School, class of '83. And I had a few rough years when I was in junior high and high school, but was fortunate enough to have truly incredible teachers that saw my potential, pushed me to be better, and never gave up on me. The impact they had on my life is what led me to pursue a career as a teacher. To some of my former Shrewsbury teachers, like Marion Abraham, who taught me the power of making ELA and social studies come alive for students through hands-on activities, like creating an actual assembly line to build wagons when we were studying Moving West, and performing fiddle around the roof in sixth grade, and I still remember my lines to this day. Ken Largest, my sixth-grade teacher and then vice-principal of the high school, who taught me you can be firm and hold students accountable and to high expectations, but do so in a kind and caring manner. And to Maggie Billidoo, my math teacher for four years in a row, who taught me the importance of making personal connections with your students and to never give up on them, no matter how hard they may resist you. I wanted to be that kind of teacher for these, that these three were to me. Throughout my career, I've held high expectations for my students. I did my best to have a positive attitude every day, to be patient with my students, and most importantly, to build those personal relationships with each and every one of them. Making sure that the students knew they were important to me, that I believed in them, and that I would, and that I will push them to be the very best that they can be. I'm proud of my accomplishment over the, accomplishments over these years and will be leaving knowing that I did the very best I could for the 1,000-plus Shrewsbury students that I have taught throughout my career here. The decision to retire was not an easy one. And while many people have said to me that you look much too young to retire, okay, no one's actually said that, but it would be nice to hear that. So although it wasn't easy, I felt that it was the right time for me. There are other opportunities I like to explore and allow myself the chance to grow and excel in other areas. While I will certainly miss teaching and miss my colleagues here in Shrewsbury, I'm looking forward to the adventures that lie ahead. Thank you.
So next up, we have a husband and wife team. And I don't know if you want to be at the mic together or so. Oh, together. Okay, together. So I'll introduce both of them. Christine Cobb has served 26 years as an educator here in Shrewsbury. She is retiring as a visual arts teacher from Shrewsbury High School. And William Cobb-Bill has served 20 years as an educator, with 19 of those years here in Shrewsbury. And he is retiring as a mathematics teacher from Shrewsbury High School.
Thank you for having us speak tonight. After 26 years of teaching art in Shrewsbury, I'd like to thank the administration for hiring me and supporting me all these years. I'm also grateful for the, having a great department at the high school to work with. Our team is always working together to help one another lend a hand. We have wonderful students, so the, the collaboration has been amazing. I'd also like to thank my coworkers, Pam LeBlanc, Chari Fox, Brooke Blankhorn, Sarah Williams, and my middle school colleague, Brian Poccat, for inspiring me all these years.
So, excuse me. So I'm Mr. Cobb, and I just wanted to thank you, Dr. Sawyer, and school committee members for inviting us here tonight. In my original speech, I was gonna say, I shared it with Chris, and I said, I'm going to tell him how I won't miss filling out all those student feedback forms. And Chris says to me, no, no, you weren't supposed to fill those out, the students were. And so I kind of paused and said, oh, no wonder I got such great reviews. I want to give a shout out to my math department. They are truly a family collaborative group. They support each other. They're caring, they're loving, and they'll always have your back. And I always say that I wouldn't mind, or I would love to have any one of them as my next-door neighbor. And I also want to give a shout out to my director, Jean-Marie Johnson. During the pandemic, now, I think anyone in our department would tell you that she's not the huggy type, you know, she doesn't like to give a lot of hugs. But. not the huggy type, you know, she doesn't like to give a lot of hugs, but during the pandemic, it was like she gave us a virtual hug, and she was just rock-solid when we needed her most. And I just wanted to give that shout-out for her. The other thing is, as I'm leaving Shrewsbury, I reflected on the mission statement, and there's a couple of words that jump out at me, and it's caring and capable. And I want you to know that as a testimonial witness, that our students, I feel, are always caring and capable. And I guess some of you, as residents of this town, are gonna have that situation where you're gonna have your brakes done, or you're gonna have your taxes filled or filed, and it's gonna be a Shrewsbury High School graduate. And you should know that they're gonna be caring and capable. I had my own personal experience. I was at St. Vincent's Emergency Ward there, and I was having a medical issue, and I was slumped over, and a student looked at me, and it was a nurse, and said to me, "Mr. Cobb, is that you?" And I kind of lifted my head up a little bit out of the slump, and I said, "Who is it?" And she says, "It's me, Sarah. I had you for statistics." So I said to her, "Listen, whatever grade I gave you, it's possible that I could still maybe change it." And at that moment, she pulled out this, like, giant needle to give me an IV, and she says, "Oh, no, 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 it's too late for that, Mr. Cobb." But she said to me, "I didn't, you didn't give me an A, but I earned an A." And she was as kind and caring and capable, and I want you to know that that's how our students are. One of the things that Mrs. Cobb and I have been married for thirty-five years -- my math ain't so good. But we've been married for thirty-five years, and we don't necessarily get to see each other a lot, even though we're in the same building together. So it's no secret among the students that sometimes we pass little love notes back and forth to them. And so we just wanted to share just a couple of them with you today. And so Chris will read them off, and I'm just gonna hand them out.
Well, and they usually come with some candy. Candy attached to the note.
Yeah, and think, like, bad dad jokes.
Open this bag, pour it over your head, and you'll be showered with kisses. This one was just yesterday. You melt my heart like chocolate in a hot car. You've been, and there's some baked beans there, you've been a joy to be around. The Junior Mints are meant to tell you how awesome you are. The raisins, the raisinetts, the bar is set high, but you keep raising it. There are a few, there are a lot of fish in the sea, but you're the best catch. I'd walk, I'd walk a hundred miles by golly because you're a hot tamale.
Oh, that was so awesome. Charlene Costello is here, and she's one of the two longest-running teachers, but she has declined to speak. So I will just say that she has so much humility, and so many people go to her for so many things. We truly appreciate her. And Charlene Costello has served thirty-nine years as an educator here in Shrewsbury, and she is retiring as a kindergarten teacher from the Major Howard W. Beal School. Madeline Del Toro Canoyer has served twenty-three and a half years as an educator, with sixteen of those years here in Shrewsbury, and she is retiring as a Spanish teacher from Shrewsbury High School. So you're here.
This is intimidating. The last time I presented to the school committee was in two thousand and eleven, when we wanted to go to Puerto Rico, and you did approve, so that was a long time ago. So I feel like I'm in the Oscars. The winner is -- good evening to all of your members of the school committee. I appreciate that you have invited all of us retirees tonight. I would like to take this opportunity to show my appreciation, to have had the opportunity to teach at Shrewsbury High School. I not only want to thank the Shrewsbury School District, but also I have to thank my students for helping me be a better teacher, the families for their support, the administration for their guidance, and of course, my colleagues, who I will miss dearly. I don't want to get too emotional. I promised Brenda Buckley at the copy center I would give her a shout-out, because she makes all our work so much easier. So hopefully she'll watch this. Last but not least, I need to thank my colleague, friend, and director, Kenneth Almeida. He has been supportive, patient, caring, and always available to assist professionally and personally for the past sixteen years. There's a lot that we have gone through for the past sixteen years, so I really love him. So thank you so much for the opportunity.
Adele Hamilton has served sixteen years as an educator here in Shrewsbury, and she is retiring as a speech-language pathologist from Oak Middle School. Darcy McCarthy has served twenty-four years as an educator here in Shrewsbury, and she is retiring as a special education teacher from Oak Middle School.
It's kind of hard to follow the Cobbs, but I just wanted to say that it has been an amazing twenty-four years. I have worked with some really amazing peers, and I have appreciated all the support. Being a special education teacher brings a lot of additional challenges at times, and I hope that my students have walked away feeling that they have grown in their confidence. One of my goals has always been to make them feel like they can do whatever is put in front of them, and I really think that's important, especially as they head off to high school and learn more about themselves and become more independent as learners. As a parent also of two students that have come through Shrewsbury Public Schools, I'm very proud of what they've accomplished and the education they got along the way. They are both very successful adults in their own careers, so that has also been a very important thing to me, and I appreciate everything that Shrewsbury has provided me over the years. And to Dr. Sawyer for taking the chance on me twenty-four years ago and hiring me as a child-specific aide when he was at Floral Street School.
So we have our other tie with Charlene Costello. Cheryl Munjin has served thirty-nine years as an educator here in Shrewsbury. She is retiring as a first-grade teacher from Calvin Coolidge School.
And I too would like to have a chance to just thank everybody for the opportunity to have a wonderful career here. I started off with Charlene in Chapter One, thirty-nine years ago, and I also had the pleasure of being next door to Gary when he came with his two ferrets, as are his class pets, and they really were a pair. And so I have just had a wonderful ride, but I often talk with my dear friend Shirley Lemay, who's up at the high school, and we used to say, you know, when we were young and just starting, we were always like, "Oh, yeah, you were the new teachers." And, you know, the parent would probably be like, "Oh, yeah, well, we got the new teacher." And then we got to be about the same age as the parents, and that was pretty good. And then we had to be a little bit older than the parents, and, you know, that was fine. And then I hear now, "Oh, well, my mammy's forty-six." And I think, "Okay, well, I'm sixty-one, so, you know, I'm now the grandparents' age or older." But I have to say, I have been so lucky, and I even have had children of the children that I have had. So it's truly been a blessing, and thank you so much for everyone.
So Wendy O'Neill is one of the people who had planned to come this evening, but she wasn't able to, and she served a mere thirty-eight years as an educator here in Shrewsbury. She's retiring as a special education teacher from the Major Howard W. Beal School, and she has asked me to read a letter to you on her behalf. So, "Dear Dr. Sawyer, Chris Girardi, Meg Belcino, members of the school committee, and countless others, my career in special education was inspired by a volunteer opportunity that I had back when I attended SHS. My mentor, Tony Manzello, taught me how to respect individuality, nurture with kindness, and teach with love. I would say that these guiding principles still hold true today. I would like to thank all of you here tonight for your leadership and support in making SPS a place where every person is respected for their individuality, where every person has a voice, and where every person is an important member of our community. I would be remiss if I did not take this opportunity to also thank all of our paraprofessionals for their dedication, constant support, and tireless efforts. Without them, I could not have done my job. I always say it's easy to come to work every day when you love what you do. Thank you all for creating environments where teachers love to come to work every day and where students love to learn. With respect, Wendy O'Neill, Special Education Teacher." And now we move to Mark Rishitelli, who, where are you? Oh, there you are. He has served thirty-five years as an educator, and thirty-five of those years here in Shrewsbury in the Speech and Debate Program. He's done a lot of other things through his life, but he is retiring from his role as a Shrewsbury High School Speech and Debate Coach.
Now it's real. But it's not as real as it is for most of you, because although I'm retiring as the head coach, I still have, hopefully, less than a decade before I have to retire from my real job. So congratulations to all of you. I'm just gonna say a few words. I got started in the speech and debate world when I was about eight or nine years old. My uncle, who was a graduate of Major Howard Beal High School, was a speech coach at Natick High School. His father was Lester Dyer, had Dr. Sawyer's job way back before anybody in this room was here. So education was always in our family. After traveling with the Natick team, coming to Shrewsbury High School, having Mrs. Kitty Viscardi as a speech teacher, and joining the team myself, eventually went to college but stayed on to help Mrs. Viscardi, as she was nearing retirement herself. The one thing I'd like to think that I've done in my tenure running this team is to uphold her values, and the one thing she always said to every student, to the entire bus, at the end of every tournament, you know, most people just got their ballots back, most of the team didn't have trophies, and she would stand up there and say, "Just remember, you were a winner the moment you stepped on the bus." And despite the fact that our team has grown tremendously, and we've had a lot of success, and very proud of that, I hope we've always still instilled, always have instilled the same spirit Mrs. Viscardi had. I'd just like to thank all of the school committee and their predecessors, Dr. Sawyer and his predecessors, Mr. Buzidlo and his predecessors, I've seen a lot of them. But I do need to thank, through the members that are here, my team, the alumni that I still see and have made great friends with. You talked about the fact that we compete against some private schools. Two of our alums are actually now the head coaches at Milton Academy, who we had surpassed, but Gabriel's gonna have a little bit of time trying to keep up with them now because they're run by Shrewsbury kids. Also, thanks to Shrewsbury Public Schools. My wife, Charlene, and I had our two sons come through here, two completely different paths, and it was a great experience for both of them. And lastly, the person I need to thank the most is my wife, Charlene. She has let me have this second family of this team, and when I first started as the head coach, it really wasn't me they called, they called her. They thought I was coaching somewhere else. So she said, "Well, I'll do it, but I can only do it if you'll hire Mark too." So we both came on, and she stayed on for a few years until our first born was there. We are both Shrewsbury High School graduates. In speech and debate, we have a category called Duo Interpretation. It's more of an acting category. It's two people. This is my dual partner. She's my dual partner for life. Thank you very much.
I would be very remiss if I didn't mention that Patrick Collins has served twenty-seven years in education, with nineteen of those years here in Shrewsbury in two parts. He's retiring as Assistant Superintendent for Finance and Operations. However, his last school committee meeting is next week, and he's gonna speak next week. So thank you back. Ann Kirchi has served twenty-seven years as an educator, with twenty-five of those years here in Shrewsbury. She is retiring as the Assistant Principal of Oak Middle School.
So glad I didn't have to follow you, Patrick. I can't tell you how happy I am about that. When Barb first asked me to speak, I said, "What on earth should I talk about?" She said, "Well, how about people who mentored you and helped you along the way?" So I thought a lot about it, and the first person who I would have to say would be my greatest mentor, greatest supporter, would be my mom. She was the one who always believed in me and always encouraged me to go into education, and when I did, she was always there to hear my stories and to support me and to help me every step along the way. So thank you, Mom, and I love you. From there, I had many women who have helped me become the administrator that I was. When I moved into a classroom position, you come out of college or graduate school for me knowing you want to be an educator, but not how to be a teacher. So there were two women, Mary Jo Moon and Mary Mead Montague, who was a principal of mine in Worcester, who really, really helped me learn how to plan, how to manage a classroom, and how to bring the joy of teaching and learning every day to students. They were really, really important mentors for me. As I spent five, six, seven years in a classroom, I started feeling like I wanted more from my experience. So I went through a leadership program, and I became certified as an administrator. And at that time, Judy Evans was the Assistant Superintendent, and she is the one who helped usher me from my mentality of a classroom position into leadership. What does it mean to lead adults in the work that we do? And Ann Jones was my sidekick at that time, and she and I went through this together, and we were curriculum coordinators, and we really learned a lot from Judy. Speaking of my sidekick, Ann Jones, we then became an administrative team at Oak Middle School, and it is there that I really learned about teamwork, and I learned about the commitment to the work, and how we help all the people, teachers, students, and parents, have a wonderful experience in education. We recognized people's strengths, and we helped students see what their strengths were. But lastly, I have to say that it's the students I have to thank. They taught me many, many, many lessons. They taught me how to be humble, and that they taught me there's always more to learn. I have loved my time as an educator. I wish the best for those who are still doing the most important and rewarding job. Thanks for letting me speak tonight.
So that is the group. Sandy, I know that you want to miss Fritz, that you want to recognize, so turn back to you.
Absolutely. Before, any comments from my colleagues first?
Congratulations to each one of you. In each of your speeches, you were thanking us and your colleagues and showing appreciation, but really, it's us thanking you for everything that you have done for us as parents, for our students, for your colleagues. Your work is so appreciated. Your work is so appreciated, and best of luck to you in what comes next.
Yeah, I'd just like to thank you all for your commitment to Shrewsbury. Four hundred and sixty-three and a half years collectively. I'm just amazed at the decades that you've spent with us, with ten of you, you know, twenty or more years, five, thirty or more, and even, even four, twelve plus, just outstanding. You're what makes this district a success, and I just appreciate everything you do for our students to help them be successful. Thank you so much.
Just to thank you all for your dedication to our district, to our students, to our families. You're just, your work, body of work is just so impressive, and just thank you and congratulations.
Yeah, as a parent in this district, when the school year opened, and actually Siri gave her remarks at opening day, I remember saying to all the educators that I trust three children to all of you every day, and it's because you're excellent and fabulous, and you create spaces and places that my kids want to be, and we, you know, and it's through all of the work that you do. So I am sort of humbled when everyone says thank you to us. We volunteer a couple hours a week here, right? You're putting in countless hours, and we really see that and appreciate it. And really, I just personally wish you all the absolute best in what you do next, and I thank you for the butterfinger. It landed well.
And I think, you know, our teachers, you're the fabric of what we do. If we didn't have teachers, we wouldn't have the success that we do with our students. And as a parent myself, with two children who went through the system, and are now successful adults, I thank you for everything that you've all done. And I look at your years of service, and we kind of live in an environment now where people jump around a lot more. Our staff stays, and I think that's a testament, you know, to the district and also your dedication to our town and our students, so thank you so much for that. And I do want to give a shout out to Gary, because we have worked together for many, many years. And my first, the first thing I remember with Mr. Chalmers with math, it was like a new math program, my son was new to the school system, and it was regrouping. I'm like, "What is regrouping?" And I sent you an email, and he said, you know, like, "It's carryover." I'm like, "Okay." It's what I used, but it was like always helping. And then we've had a relationship with Gary, with the school committee for negotiations. And I can say that Gary was always the biggest cheerleader for the staff. Like, you wanted to make sure that you did everything you could to make sure that the teachers and the staff and the S E A were taken care of. So I always appreciated working with you. It was a great collaboration, and we will miss you for, you know, for that piece. It was wonderful to work with you through that. So thank you to everyone, and again, you're the fabric of what we do, and we are so lucky to have had you for so, so many years, so thank you. Dr. Sawyer?
Thank you. Those of you who made remarks certainly were touching in a variety of ways, and, or shared remarks, and knowing, and those who didn't, we know that you, for all of you, your service speaks for itself. Teaching is an important job. All of you can go into retirement secure in the knowledge that you've done something important with your career that's truly made a difference for a community, and most importantly, by improving the lives of the students whom you served over the years. And what we have here represents serving many, many thousands of students who have benefited from you. It's impressive to me, so many of you thanked teachers you had, even going back to when you were a student, how you were influenced. And being an educator who comes from a family of educators myself, that's deeply meaningful, and I appreciate that you did that. I think it's important to note that teaching has become more challenging and more complex over the time, certainly that I've been in Shrewsbury since nineteen ninety-seven when Floral Street opened, and I've worked, had the pleasure and the privilege of working alongside many of you during those years, and particularly the last several years with the pandemic and lots of other societal issues, and the advent of social media and cellphones. There are a variety of things that have made this work even much more complex. And for, one of the things I appreciate about Shrewsbury teachers generally, and I think you here this evening who are retiring and being honored, represent that teachers here have evolved and have continued to learn and responded to what the circumstances demanded, especially over the course of COVID. So I am enormously grateful, and I speak on behalf of everyone for the, here in the school district, your colleagues, families, but especially, as you all mentioned, the students. You've done such meaningful work to benefit them, and for that, we are always enormously grateful. So thank you. Thank you to Barb for putting together the program as she does, and as our Executive Director of Human Resources and the support she provides to our educators all the time. At this point, are we asking folks to come up if they're comfortable? And I believe we have a token of appreciation that if Mr. Riefenpor or Mr. Wenski can make sure they get that as they come forward. But we invite you to come forward and shake the hand of the committee and be recognized. But for everyone present, how about a huge round of applause?
Gary's going to leave like he always does.
Twenty-one years old, huh? The work is comfortable.
You're welcome. Thank you. Congratulations.
Congratulations. Thank you so much.
Careful of the cords, yep.
Okay, I think we're all set. All right. So next, we're moving on to a Teacher Diversification Project Report. In June of 2022, the Teacher Diversification Project Team members reported to the school committee on the activities of this group. For the 2022-2023 school year, the team expanded to include more individuals and continue their work toward building a more diverse staff across the school district. And I believe I'm turning it over to Ms. Malone. I'm not sure.
Actually, we are going to toss it to Mr. Gerardi.
There you go.
It's hard after the, it's hard after the retirees.
Yeah, it is.
But it's an important one, so thank you for having us tonight. Our Teacher Diversification Team is in our second year of existence. Last year, we presented to school committee right around this time, where we completed our first year of a pilot program with the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education to do justice, to work on teacher diversification for Shrewsbury. Last year, we had seven staff members, and now we currently have fifteen staff members representing all levels of, all levels, including elementary, middle school, high school, across departments, and central offices.
Okay. Done that?
Yep.
And we are here. Okay, sorry, we lost our technology for a minute, so.
Thank you.
I had a long decade.
So as stated, we have fifteen members on our team this year. We'll go down the line and we'll introduce ourselves, including those who are not with us this evening. I'll start. I'm Chris Gerardi, Principal of Major Howard W. Beal School.
Christina Manos, Director of the English Language Education Program.
Now, I'm Assistant Principal at the high school.
Laura Egan, English Teacher at Oak Middle School.
Kristen Minio, I'm one of the Adjustment Counselors at Oak Middle School.
Maria Clara, Meseta Wood, I'm the Media Center Assistant at the high school, also the Language Lab Tech.
Lindsay Stachowski, I'm the HR Manager.
Rob Dunn, I'm Cookie Coordinator at the middle schools.
Phyllis DiBover, I'm the Social Worker.
Barbara Malone, Executive Director of HR.
There are some folks who are not here with us this evening, but they did put a lot of work into the project this year, and we want to recognize them. We have Jordan Grinstein, who is the Director of Mindfulness for the district. We have Kara Richardson, who is a School Adjustment Counselor at Walter J. Patton School, Adriana Soro, who is a Grade Four Teacher at Major Howard W. Beal School, and Patty Waterhouse, who is our Director of Middle School Special Education. So through the winter and spring of this year, we met monthly as a team, as a whole group, and then intermittently, we met as smaller subgroups to tackle some goals that we presented to you last school year. Those goals really are organized into three subgroups, and we did divide ourselves into three subgroup teams to tackle each of those goals. The three subgroups are Guidelines to Personnel Hiring, Recruitment and Retention, and Professional Development.
So these last two slides here just go through what we reported to you last year just as a quick refresher. These are the things we said we would do this year, so they're here on these couple of slides. So before we get into talking about our statistics, I did want to mention that data doesn't always tell the whole story, and I know you have this in your report, but I want to say it out loud for anyone in the public who's watching. It doesn't always tell the whole story, because sometimes families or employees don't self-report their form of diversity. Some may find the federal categories to be out of date, they may find them to be offensive. Others report, but the reporting categories don't reflect their unique diversity. So just a couple of examples, if someone may come to America with a background as an English language learner, but they're coming from an Eastern European country, so they will come in as white, but yet they will have the experience of coming to a new country and learning a language for the first time. Now, we keep losing our, our contact here. The one that's happening. Ooh, now I need the password. Maybe I'll put it in. Amy Clotter, Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum Instruction and Assessment. Yes, okay. We're not really sure why that keeps going out, but she'll stay close by just in case. So we want to view Slide Joe. So another example is LGBTQ plus faculty, where students, faculty whose children or spouses are diverse, even if they themselves are not considered so, and religious diversity. So these are all things that we don't really report on in the statistics, but they really do inform the diversity of the district. And I always like to say we have this broad category of Asian, and that encompasses so many different countries, so many different cultures. So it really doesn't even begin to explain what we have going on. So in this first table, this is a Department of Elementary and Secondary Education report. You can find it on their website, and this is student enrollment. And the reason why we look at student enrollment is because that tells us what we should be looking at corresponding for staff in the district. And so you can see that the percent of our district this school year, this is based on older data, but it's reported for this school year. It did the same thing again.
Why don't you share the slides with me, Ms. Malone, and I'll project, and hopefully that.
Excellent. Okay. So I am going to share that with you right now. Thank you, Dr. Sawyer. So I'll just keep going while Dr. Sawyer brings that up. And so anyway, this, this slide, which will come up in a minute, we're calling it Table One in the report, shows that as a percent of the state, for example, the category that they call African American is like nine point four percent of the students in the state. It's about three point eight percent of the students in our district. Asian, there's about seven point three percent in that category of students in the state, but here in Shrewsbury, it's thirty-four point five percent of our students. The state has twenty-four point two percent Hispanic. Here in the district, it's nine point nine percent. Again, this is student enrollment data. If you go on and you look at white, the state, fifty-four point four percent of the state students are white. Here in Shrewsbury, it's forty-six percent of the total population. So that, that gives you an idea of what our student enrollment is like. Then when you look at the next slide, which is Table Two, and again, this is published by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, you see the all-staff data by race, ethnicity, for full-time equivalent positions for this year. And so when you look here, you can see how we compare to the state in our staffing. And in neither case does staffing line up to student demographics. And this has been a big initiative for the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, which of course is how we got, we got started, by working with them on their program. So you can see that for the state, there's only about five percent of educators are African American. Here in the district, that's one point seven six percent. Asian, here in the district, we have six point seven percent Asian. For the state, one point nine six percent. The state has six point, six percent Hispanic, we have about two percent. The state is at eighty, six percent white educators. Here in Shrewsbury, we're at eighty-eight point six nine percent. So these are two charts together, the one on the previous screen and, and this Table Two, together, they show what the state is reporting on their website. So now we're going to move forward to Table Three, and Ms. Winn is going to take it away.
So in Table Three, what you will see is our professional educators here at Shrewsbury, in the Shrewsbury Public Schools. And looking at professional educators, it's defined as licensed educators, which includes teachers, nurses, school psychologists, counselors, et cetera. So anyone who is licensed within our district. Looking at this table, you can see that our, the percent of professional educators are pretty far from where our student demographics are, and hence part of our work towards diversifying our staff. If you can jump to Table Four, this is the work that we've been doing over the past two years. And if you, just for example, if you look at the Hispanic Latino, call, Ro, what you'll see is the increase to four point eight oh from one point four six. And from that, what we did was we increased that category in terms of professional educators by five. Another example, looking at the Asian category, there's an overall of two point six percent. That was the, that's what we have right now, but over the past two years, we've increased and hired seven of those, fourteen, which increased us to six point seven three. So the progress that we've been making is small, slow, not where we want to be, but we're definitely at the start and definitely really targeting our work towards this, and we're all hopeful and have a lot of faith in terms of hoping our numbers can increase the diversity for teachers.
So if we move forward to Table Five, the paraprofessional educators, we have a little bit of a better story here. So as of May fifth of this year, our total paraprofessional So as of May 5th of this year, our total paraprofessional group, and I see a typo here, this is supposed to say paraprofessional educators here, but you can see that we have eight that identify as Hispanic or Latino, 51 as Asian, 16 as Black, three as two or more races, non-Hispanic, three American Indian, 230 white. So you can see that the percentage of paraprofessional educators is 76.41%. So that's lower, meaning that we have more diversity in this group, and we're getting a little closer to what our student demographics are. And especially if you looked at, look at our hiring over the last two years, then you see that for, if we look at our overall percentage of Hispanic employees, it says it's eight people. But in the last two years, we actually hired seven of those people since we started this work. Another example is our overall percentage of Asian paraprofessionals is 16.94%, 51 people. But in the last two years, we hired 35 of them, and that's a percentage of 27.56% of total hires, and that's actually starting to approach the representation of 34.5% of our students being Asian. So I'd say, in this category of paraprofessionals, we're making significant progress towards diversifying our paraprofessional workforce in the last two years. So it probably would have been better if I could have put these slides side by side, but I didn't want to call out for anyone who's watching that when you really look at what we've done in the last two years, you really can see a difference from what's gone before. So moving on to substitutes, this is the area, we've actually been at it longer in terms of trying to improve our diversity in this group. So as of 5/5, we had about 57% white daily subs, and Asian is 15.22%. We do have a significant number of our day-to-day subs, where we don't know what ethnicity they are. I did go in to look at the individual names and see if I knew any of them. Lindsay works very closely with that population, and it was pretty clear to me about half of them do identify as Asian, they just didn't happen to click the box. So our percentage of Asian substitutes is higher than what you see, what you see here. And if you look at what's happened over the last two years, it's basically roughly the same. We've been working on this for four or five years, so at this point, it is kind of, it's kind of static. You know, we're doing better, we've been doing better for a while with this group. So the next group I wanted to look at was, oh yeah, this was an answer to a question that a member of the school committee had asked me prior to this meeting, which was, are you really getting more diverse candidates? And we're going to talk in a minute about the different things we've been trying to do to get more candidates. And we were able to run reports for the 21-22 school year and the 22-23 school year, but when I went to run the 23-24 school year, we're really not done hiring, and when I looked at the numbers, it didn't really make a lot of sense because we still have so many more positions that we're still working on hiring, and many of them are being appointed across the next couple of weeks. But it's a category where we can only report it once it's done. In other words, we don't know anything about the people we're hiring, like what they chose, until the hiring's all done and the offer's made, and then we can do a look back. So just out of interest, you can see that in the 21-22 school year, 75% across our roles, and this combines teachers and paraprofessionals and IT, those kind of roles, 75% of our candidates were white, about, almost 10% didn't provide it, and so on and so forth with that. And if you look at for this last year, it's still roughly the same. I do want to mention, though, that because we've been going out in colleges and universities, we are getting applicants from different sources than school spring. And so some of those candidates, I would say about 50% of those candidates are people of color, but at this point, they're not being captured in this because we're getting those applications in from other sources. So we had talked about our three subgroups. Chris had mentioned those when we started. We split up to go after the goals we had set at the end of last year. So just to recap, we wanted to do work on our guidelines to personnel hiring, we wanted to have a group that focused on recruitment and retention, and we wanted to have a group focused on the professional development of our leadership team. So I am speaking to this slide because my partner on this team wasn't able to come tonight, but these are the things we've worked on. We have a draft revision done according to guidance from Dr. Sawyer and according to what we learned from the Teacher Diversification Project. We want to have some more review of it this summer with other leaders so that we can make sure people really understand where it's coming from. There's a DESI guide to diverse personnel hiring. We did make the decision to roll that into our work. We developed diversity-based questions, and we have additional anti-bias activities to lead off hiring teams. So those were some things we said we were going to do, and now I believe I'm turning it over to Lindsay.
Yes.
Okay.
So I am part of the recruitment subgroup, along with several others. So I'm going to speak on some of the different things that we've been doing to do some more outreach within the community and not just post through school spring, which has been our primary source for our job postings for quite some time. So our main focus this year was really to get out into the community more, the local area colleges, and really try to start making our presence known there and building those relationships with the hopes of connecting with the students and hopefully getting them to come in once they're done and have moved on from their college education. So we really wanted to make a proactive approach and look at the different job fairs and things that the colleges were offering. So we really took a primary focus on getting out and participating in job fairs through the local area colleges. So this year, we participated in the UMass Boston Virtual Career Job Fair. We did one at Framingham State, Worcester State. We also did a virtual online career fair through DESI. And then our Marlborough Public Schools also hosted a career fair, that they opened that up to the other local area districts as well. So that one was really nice to participate in, we kind of collaborated together, which was wonderful. Through those different job fairs, we received more than 40 applications from potential candidates, had some really great conversations with upcoming seniors. So, you know, kind of getting interested and looking to see what their career path might be and where they might be able to go out and get a job in their field once they go off and graduate. Out of those more than 40 applications, 15-plus were forwarded to our special education team, potentially for paraprofessional roles. More than 10 were for various teaching positions and educated roles, and some were for IT consideration as well. We did talk to some who were interested in substituting or different volunteer opportunities as well, but it was a really great opportunity for us to get out and really talk to some of the students and put our face out there more in the community. We also did what's called an employer spotlight at Framingham State, so we were able to connect with their career services team, and they had us put up a table in their student area, which they really identified as their high-traffic area. So we had a table there, myself, Kristin Herrick, and Meg Bartlett, and we really sat and gave out packets and talked to different students who were coming by, asking them if they were interested in summer jobs or after-school jobs, really trying to focus that initiative on bringing paraprofessional staff in. So our hope for future goals is to do more of those employer spotlights, where we're not competing with a lot of different other employers, like a career fair. It would be more of us kind of there on our own. And then, as Barb mentioned, school spring is where a lot of our job postings go out to, but we also wanted to put our job postings out, again, to try to attract some more diverse staff and diverse candidates. So we are posting through Handshake as well. So Handshake is a platform that posts out our positions to all of the different local area colleges, so not just current students, but alumni as well. We also post individually through Indeed, so school spring posts through Indeed as well on our behalf, but we go out and do a separate posting on Indeed to keep it on top of the board and refreshed. We also post through ZipRecruiter, I Am Diversity, and The Teacher's Lounge. So we really wanted to look at different platforms, again, you know, that we could utilize to really attract different candidates and hopefully get some more of the diverse staff coming in.
I did want to mention, one of the problems with moving the needle on the licensed educators and the direction we want is what you saw right here. I mean, they're going to leave, like here for 20, 30 years, and so it's like a ship, you know, you're going to turn like 30 years ago. So, you know, we're all trying. And on the next slide, there's a, we realized when we were at these job fairs that we were, there was a problem, and that was bling. And so I sent an email to Jane, and she connected with Kathleen Kehoe of Colonial Fund, and they were able to get us the things, to sort of, we went to the job fairs and we were just like, here's our table. Barb and I are chasing people down the hall, and we had brochures, and that was about it. But now we have the brochures that the students made, we had flyer information packets. The students, being young, realized that we needed a QR code. And, I mean, it's amazing, when you run into the college kids, it's all they want, they don't want paper, they just want to click, click, click. And we'd ask for resumes, and they'd look at you like, well, I only brought four. And so, you know, but we realized, okay, it's computer age, so we're getting it. Lindsay designed a beautiful retractable banner that pulls up from the floor, it's wonderful, tablecloth wonders, and wearing the T-shirt that was designed by Lindsay, I believe. And so we look professional, it's nice, it really does make a difference. And that's thanks to Jane and Kathleen Kehoe, like Jane was just hunting down that for us.
And we also have to thank Maria.
Yes.
Because she was the person who took it upon herself.
I did.
Go ahead, yeah.
And I work with an amazing person, Emily Bradberg, she's our media center specialist. She's an outstanding educator. I couldn't have done it without her because she opened her space to welcome me. That's not her library, that's our library, and there's the students' library. So it was just easy to communicate something that I needed, I felt it was urgent, that we can work together. And just like the teacher says, we have the most amazing resources, our students are extremely caring and capable. It was very easy just to refer to her, and the students knew what they were doing, and they were exciting. It was a very diverse group of students, and they were excited to work in any diversity initiatives.
So the brochure that you see on the screen, that is exactly what the students wound up designing under Maria's help, and...
Emily Bradberg? I had to say her name.
And we've used, I mean, we've handed out so many of these things, and when you click that QR code, it brings you right to the most up-to-date postings from Shrewsbury Public Schools, right on our website. And we tested it out several different times to make sure that if you were still clicking it, it was still working. And people who understand how these things work could have told me that, but I see for myself, being of another generation.
The banner has the QR code on it as well, so, yeah, that first career fair was a little awkward with our lonely table, so we're thankful to have all these other resources now, so it's been wonderful.
I think clicking on the next slide, so I am filling in for Adriana Soro, who could not be here tonight, so if I'm looking at the slide and kind of reading a little bit, please be kind. I think one of the big things that we're looking at with this slide is building connections, so not just the connections that we want to reach out to, but strengthening the connections that we already have with community partners. The first thing that I think we definitely want to do is join the Massachusetts Partnership for Diversity in Education. It's a consortium of school districts that are dedicated to diversity in hiring, and they put on different job fairs and different events throughout the year to help attract diverse talent for their schools. So we'd like to be able to join that and access some of their programs. They initially were just in the Boston community and the surrounding communities, but we've realized that they've branched all the way out, you know, to Fitchburg and Westboro and Northboro, and so we think being a part of that community will help us to grow our talent pool as well. A number of other initiatives we're looking at, we mentioned going to some recruitment fairs, we'd like to do more of that next year. We've learned that there's sort of a recruiting season, so sort of taking advantage of that and going to some fairs earlier on in the year, I think will be helpful for us. Continuing to do some of the employer spotlights at different colleges and universities. Somebody in our group had the great idea of reaching directly out to the Center for Multicultural Affairs at some of the different colleges.
That would be Maria again.
Yeah.
Adriana.
Oh, it was Adriana!
I couldn't remember, I didn't want to say who because I couldn't remember, but reaching out directly to the offices of Multicultural Affairs and really connecting with them and seeing how we can, you know, increase our recruitment efforts in that area. We also thought about, like, what resources do we already have? So there are a lot of teachers that already have connections with universities and pre-service coordinators. Actually, we thought about more right away, we have one in our building, and seeing, you know, taking a look at her connections, who can we access to kind of get our name out there, maybe go visit some of the classrooms and talk to students directly, without necessarily being a part of just a recruitment fair or something like that. And then also strengthening the touchpoints that we're having with some of the students and the pre-service coordinators. What are things that Shrewsbury is doing well? What are some things that we can do better? Tell us a little bit more about your experience. So getting that feedback along the way as opposed to just at an exit interview, so maybe there's some things that we can do different or we can, you know, take a look at. So that's something else we're looking at, increasing that feedback. And then, you know, we really looked at some other districts that had a lot of diverse candidates for hire, and they have lots of pictures and, you know, lots of visuals that really tell the story about the teaching community and the supportive community, and Shrewsbury doesn't have that yet. So we'd like to add some pieces to our human resources page that really talk, that really show what our community looks like and how, you know, what we're looking to support with our teaching staff moving forward. So we're hoping that that will be helpful as well.
So the next subcommittee is the Professional Development Subcommittee, and our goal is really to focus on how we can support the district leadership team as they continue to increase their, and deepen their understanding of the impacts that implicit bias has on the hiring process. So the district leadership team members are, they lead all the hiring teams across the district, and by guiding the district leadership team in ways to become more aware of bias, there'll be like more of an opportunity to lead conversations skillfully and with sensitivity throughout the entire hiring process, including, and importantly, the other members of the hiring committees, kind of letting them understand the importance of how we come to understand and acknowledge that we do have this implicit bias, and how do we look at that as we peel it back to try to do the best we can as we're hiring different candidates? And really kind of look at it through the lens of equity. So that's really what we've, our goal is. And one of the things that I think is important, as a person who's been on many interview committees, is really taking the time to help... is really taking the time to help those of us who are not in the district leadership team to kind of understand the importance of the implicit bias that we all carry. And um, we all just need to continue to learn and grow. So that was our, our goal. And now Christine Manos is gonna talk about the action steps that we're gonna take.
So um, how will our professional development work or what will it look like? So our subcommittee for next year for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year is proposing that we come to each monthly district leadership team meeting with an activator or an activity for everyone present at the meeting to really be able to work on these goals. First, we wanna take this handbook that Barb and Patty have so lovingly changed to reflect our commitment to, to diversity and make it really a living document, not something that we get and we put on the shelf and we look at only when we can't remember what are the right questions to ask. But that we're using it to really make our whole process more thoughtful and more reflective of this commitment that we have. We're hoping to have maybe ten minutes at each DLT meeting to bring these activators forward. We wanna start with unpacking bias. And let's face it, we all have biases, right? It's important that we recognize that. It's important to understand that they're natural, they're typical, they're expected. And it's also important to understand what they are so that we can unpack how our biases impact all of the decisions we make in the hiring process. Whether it's the college you graduated from or the outfit you're wearing when you show up for the interview or what you sound like on the phone when I call you for a screening. Right? So we really need to reflect on that. We also wanna spend time with DLT practicing some of the conversations and the scenarios related to hiring. Because sometimes we think we know what we're gonna do and we get in those situations and we haven't practiced how to deal with them. And that's important work as well. Some of it are these activities that we do with our hiring committee at the beginning when we wanna talk about our identities and our own biases. We wanna make sure that those activities feel meaningful for everyone involved, that it's not just a checkbox, that we have to start with this because Barb said so. We wanna make sure that it's really meaningful and that everyone gets something out of it. But we also wanna make sure that everybody who's leading the hiring process are able to ask thoughtful questions to candidates about their ability to commit to diversity, equity, inclusion, and belonging. Similarly, we wanna make sure that everybody's able to answer the questions. Anecdotally, a member of our larger committee shared that she committed to Shrewsbury because the administrator in her interview had such thoughtful answers. And as a person of color, when she heard this administrator talking about how committed our district is to these goals, she thought, even though I'm gonna be one of just a few, I still think my home is here. I still think I can make this work. And that was a really powerful story, I think, for all of us. So we wanna make sure everybody knows the why and is able to really speak to that. So that's what's important to us. The last part, sorry, I'm out of breath. I don't know why. The last part is we wanna make sure that the work we're doing is really transformative, that we're really impacting how people think. Again, we don't want it to be a checkbox. We don't want it to be performative. We don't wanna say, oh, look at us, we're committed to diversity. We wanna do the hard work and we wanna make sure that we're helping everyone do that work.
So in our final thoughts, and you can feel free to jump in if you decide you want to. But um, basically, um, we've had a lot of conversations amongst our group about the power of leadership and the fact that when we see various leaders among ourselves take a particular action, um, it leads us to believe that we should take a similar action. And so as all of us have responsibility to be leaders in the district within our own areas, that we really want to um, make sure that everyone feels empowered to move forward, um, to put the actions behind the words that we have. And the deeper we go in this, the more work we discover. And, you know, we had a very interesting conversation within our group. Denise was key to that conversation. Um, because we really wanted to understand how the work we were doing to bring more diverse candidates in would be met by the culture of Shrewsbury Public Schools um, as those candidates come in the door. And so Amy Clowder, Assistant Principal or Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum Instruction and Assessment, came to one of our meetings, really talked about the work that she and Dr. Sawyer have been doing this year and the kind of work they're going to be doing to lead the district forward in this area too. So I think that the, the district leadership team members will really see sort of that combination of how do we bring in more candidates? How do we appoint more candidates? But then, how do we have a culture where people really want to be here at Shrewsbury Public Schools? And we have, we have spots of golden light or white light throughout the district. And we have spots where people just don't have the tools. And so what we wanna do is just make sure as a district, we're really moving forward. And again, that we're not just giving lip service, but we're really digging deep into the um, the issues. So anything you wanna add? Are you good?
No.
Um, so we're open for questions.
Lindsay? Yeah, I just really.
Thank you.
I'm very appreciative. And so give me, give me, give me a, a sec. Um, for your commitment, on behalf of all of you, um, the work is so incredibly important. And I wanted, I have a, a few thoughts. I think, I wanna call out that I think you're being incredibly strategic. I think your three areas of focus from your, you know, guide, guidebook about hiring and practice, recruitment and retention, and ultimately the professional development really reflects um, the relationship that we want the district to have with employees over the whole life course, right through tonight to retirement and why that makes this even more challenging because they stay too long. Um, but.
But we love, but we love them.
Exactly. But that's great.
We love them. They're great educators.
Except for this problem. Yeah, exactly. Um, uh, but I think it's being, you're being thoughtful. I think it's, it's manageable amounts of change to lead to a longer-term result. And I think that's, that's important and highly likely to lead to the goals that we're, we're getting to. Um, I appreciate that you're embedding both uh, process improvements, things like guidebooks, right, or guidelines, um, which, which, which are obviously really important for folks who might be new at the hiring process. Some of you do it all the time and we're, we've gotta kind of get to everybody. But that, but also coupling that with some of the work around, I appreciate the term, the transformative change, right? And that, and that there are pieces here where we are really trying to ensure that we're leading with our values. Um, and that we're reflecting in, in the work you're doing, reflecting sort of the, the notion of lifelong learners and that we all have something to learn here. We all have some change to be, to be making across, across the board. And that we're getting to a place where ultimately this is about our school district really embracing our entire community from future hires to parents on your panels, to the students you're here to educate. And so um, I'm, I wanna just, you know, again, really appreciate that as a strategic effort that, that feels really thoughtful. Um, I wanna also note that you, you began with results, uh, and what are the results? And so I wanna say a couple of things about that if I, if I can. Uh, first of all, at the state level, um, and I spent some time with your data, so thank you for the comparison. I should have said, the report is really, really great and there's a lot there for people to pull out of. Um, that at the state level, uh, fifty-four percent of the students are white, but only eighty-six percent of educators in the state, uh, and eighty-six percent of the educators in the state are white. And so we have this real mismatch as a career, right, as a, as an, so this is not particularly unique to Shrewsbury that we have something going on and we see this, um, you know, hiring pool is not reflecting exactly what we're going for. Um, began long before you decided to post a job, um, about sort of who's, who's in the profession and why. Um, and I know, you know, you have Felicity here, true certainly in social work and certain areas around mental health. It's true in um, lawyer fields that I'm in, right, that certain pools, we, we just aren't there at the right, at the right place. So you're, you're trying to solve a problem that is, that is big and complicated and you don't have all the right partners lined up, you know, or earlier on in the game. Um, a second, I also wanna just note that from where I sit, I think you're all being a little understated in your results. Um, and so like that while small, right, in, in, in some places, also really meaningful and impressive in just a couple of years. And so, you know, that we went from um, four professional educators who are African-American in twenty-twenty-three, but three of them came in the last year. But that's really big. Okay, those numbers are small and those individuals, I really want them to come and have a good experience here. So I don't wanna miss what was just said, sort of the last, that, that last comment. Um, but we went from under one percent to almost three percent, which is very close to reflecting our student body in, in Shrewsbury um, for really the first, first time. For Asian Ameri-, Asian Americans, um, again, fourteen but seven in the last, in the last two years. That, that is, that is some really notable progress in just a couple of years. Um, and the interesting thing here too is that because of the way our, the profession works, um, staff don't leave. We like that. Uh, we've talked a lot about that tonight. But there's a, this is a really unique career in that hiring is a cyclical annual process, right? And that it's, and, but for many of the rest of us, we're in jobs where people are hiring all the time. And it's not this like funny window where you do it right, just, you know, and I appreciate there's, you know, um, substitutes and others that we're hiring throughout the year. But for many people, they're hired, they're, they're hired and they're gonna stay at least a year and then they're gonna think about something else. So you've only had, since this initiative has begun, a couple of opportunities to kind of make some change. Um, and so I think this is a long game and I think, I think we're laying out a really impressive path to kind of get to the long game. And while a couple of you are like, well, this isn't what we want. Like, there's something really good here and you're on to something and I hope you see it and kind of stick with it. And the fact that you've doubled the number of folks on this group feels like you are. Um, and so I just, I'm appreciative and wanna call out what I think our success is. And then, yep, this is every year and we gotta stay on it. And there's a reason we baked it into our goals across the board because we think it's important for all that we're doing. And clearly, we want our staff to both want to be here, to want to stay here, and to get the support they need throughout. So I just have lots of kudos for the effort. There's no question in there. It's just kind of my, my impression of all of the work you're doing. So thank you.
Thank you.
I also wanted to thank you all for your efforts on this very important issue. Um, the report was extremely informative and there's a lot there and I would encourage people to take a look at it. Um, I also wanted to acknowledge what Ms. Effronan just said, that the progress over the last two years, I think you've definitely undersold it um, tonight. It's really been significant. Um, I did have a question about the recruitment with surrounding college students and whether or not are you trying to target um, just graduating seniors? Or are you trying to get maybe some younger um, college students as well? I, I think that might be helpful um, to maybe target uh, potentially student teachers or students that may have availability to substitute while they're in college or work maybe if they're going part-time or, you know, something along those lines to kind of get, the earlier the better?
Yeah.
So I didn't know if, what the efforts were on, on that.
Sure. So all of the above.
Okay.
So really, again, making a focus of building the connections, um, talking to the career services team. Um, we found that that is really helpful in identifying potential students um, as they're going throughout their, their college education, whether they want to go and do student teaching um, or if they want to come substitute. Um, we have different opportunities um, that we've been presented with as far as folks, you know, wanting to be either ABA substitutes or daily substitutes to get that experience in the classroom um, before they go on and do their student teaching. Um, so it's really, like we said, kind of creating those touchpoints all across the board at different points. Um, so reaching out to them by doing the different employer spotlights and building those connections and kind of enticing them to come in, um, whether it's in a sub-capacity, a student teaching capacity, um, you know, or even just making that connection, that they have somebody to say, oh, hey, I met you at a job fair. You know, do you have any positions available? Um, so just really kind of from soup to nuts, A to Z, really starting to, to foster and cultivate those relationships to get those candidates coming through the door.
Great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, I appreciate all the work that you do for this. And I agree with Ms. Effronan, this is a long game. This is an ongoing process, right? There's, there's no end to this. There's always room for improvement, but I think there are some notable successes here. Um, and, and as Barb said, the, the data only tells a portion of the story, right? And I, I think about kind of what's within our control, right? And you look for recruitment opportunities, uh, whether it's new ways to find, uh, you know, ways to, you know, create awareness of what, what is available in our district, whether that be job fairs or job boards. And uh, the recurring focus on best, best practices, I think, is important as well, uh, and taking meaningful action. You mentioned that. And just overall, making this a desirable place to work. And we certainly saw an example of that with our retirees. I think what's harder to control for us is around, you know, the applicant pools and the number of applicants and how they report. You remen-, you mentioned that. Um, also applicants and candidates' decision-making, right? Like, do they pursue other opportunities? Have we pursued them, but maybe they're going elsewhere? We don't have a lot of control over that. Um, and, you know, a good challenge to have certainly is long-tenured associates in the district. Um, so that again is not something that we have uh, control over. So I appreciate the work that you're doing. I encourage you to keep, keep, uh, keep going and uh, thank you so much.
Um, I, I too appreciate all the work that's gone into this because this is a lot of work and you each have day jobs um, and other committees that you're on. Um, and to echo um, what my colleagues have said and also something that Ms. Malone said is that um, in the data, there's a lot of diversity that didn't come out of, you know, what is in the report. We, we, there is, you know, whether we hired more males or, or females or um, did we hire um, candidates that might have a disability or are part of the LGBTQ community? Um, so there is probably more diversity than you're actually giving yourselves credit for. Um, and I appreciate that. And I have to say that um, also as a, as a parent that has sat on some of the hiring committees, um, I've done that for a number of years and there has definitely been progress. Um, and there's been more candidate, more parents that are getting involved who also represent diversity. And also just the flow of the interviews and the conversations that come out of that are more substantial. Um, and I think are, you know, probably leading to, to different kinds of candidates. So thank you for, for your work on this.
And looking at the June twenty-two report to this report, there's a ton of work has been done. And I agree, I think you're selling yourself short. You know, the intention is there. We wanna hire well-qualified diverse staff as best we can. And most corporations and businesses are trying to do that, so we're all in that same predict, you know, trying to find people to fit roles. And Ms. Effronan made a comment, you know, the, the pool to begin with, I don't know how many people are in the educator pool that you're looking at in various groups. So that is a piece of the data that, you know, we don't have. We wouldn't even know that. But it's, you know, there's so many variables that go into it, but we're not just checking a box, which is the best thing. And I work for a very large corporation and we've been doing a lot more with diversity in hiring. And I think sometimes we went off the path a little because it was becoming exclusive and not inclusive in, in certain ways that people weren't thinking of when that was happening. So I think we have a great plan to move forward. We're gonna look for ways to branch out. I do think uh, the marketing piece and the brochure from the students is excellent. I mean, my kids are mortified if I can't get my menu up on a QR code, you know, like, just give it to me. So it's, it's the techno-, you know, you know who I'm talking about, Ms. Satterfield. And it's one of, like, technology has changed, so we need to use all these tools. And we do need to market Shrewsbury Public Schools. So when we go out, we wanna market. And I know we use a lot of alumni. Like, you have, you know, teachers from all over. Use your alumni connections. They're gonna be able to maybe even get in even quicker to some of these colleges and find staff that we really wanna bring on board. So I think this is great. We're moving the needle. We've got a ways to go. But it's a great group of people working on it and I am so, so impressed by the work over the past year, which is another busy year for the school and everything else you're doing. So great, great work. Thank you.
Ms., can I ask one question that occurred, occurred to me if you don't mind? Um, I, I note that your sort of second big category is on recruitment and retention, but we didn't talk a lot about retention. And if we, you know, I don't know if we have a retention problem. Like, are we trying to solve something that we think a lot of folks are leaving and the folks who are leaving are maybe more likely to represent one of the affinity groups that we're trying to attract? Um, it's good to put it on the radar, but like, is that, is that something that we're tracking? Or are we doing exit interviews and suggesting that, that there is something there that we wanna solve for?
That's a great question. And uh, Dr. Sawyer has actually asked me to take on a much more in-depth exit interview process for the upcoming.
Okay.
School year so that we learn more about what's going on with teachers. I have been meeting with some of our individual um, teachers and especially our teachers of color. And, you know, the, the honest situation is that when you're one of very few, you are still trying to see how you fit into this culture. And you may experience situations throughout the district where you do scratch your head a little bit and um, have questions about how a particular situation is being handled. But changing the whole approach of a district, that's lifelong learning. I mean, we would like to see it, I mean, people in this group, we would like to see it happen tomorrow. And we would like it, you know, but that's not how change happens. And we know that. And we know that um, by partnering with um, Amy Clowder, we're really gonna help about the retention. Because a lot of that is into the professional. because a lot of that is into the professional development that individual educators get and, you know, what, what kind of experiences they get when they get here. And I know that both Dr. Sawyer and Ms. Clouter really have done a ton of work this year too in this area. And I think that as we merge more and more of that, retention isn't as much of a job of this group, but it was one of the pieces that was incredibly important when we started our training with the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. But retention, it's everybody's job.
And also I mentioned to her most recently that, I'm Denise Satterfield. I mentioned to her that I would like to propose an affinity group for educators of color because I've been in the district for 22 years and have not had anyone to really confer with to talk about things that might be germane to my culture. And it would have been nice to have that. So I just talked to her about this a few weeks ago. The next person I'll talk to is Amy Clouter. And that's something I'd like to see happen, but I know I have to be very thoughtful about the way that I, you know, talk to them about this and the way that I propose it. So I want to be extremely thoughtful about the whole process and then I'll propose it to them because I think what you're saying is very important.
I think, I really appreciate that, that it's been noted that we're, you're kind of coming up with a plan. And I guess it would encourage you as you're building that out, Barb. And I, I work at an organization, we have five different affinity groups for veterans and LGBTQ status and, and a multicultural group. And so I think, I think it's a great idea. I'm not, we have one for women, but I work in transportation and I don't have a lot of women. That's not quite the challenge you're all having, a little different. But the, but as you think about sort of tracking the data on, on, on retention, you know, it's, it's, it's a couple of things. It's a quantitative and a qualitative for me, right? It's qualitative, why, right? What are the, what are the experiences that people are having? But it's to me quantitative if we are, let's say, losing folks in the paraprofessional ranks who are filling some of the groups that we're trying to target and then they're later not going to become our professional educators because they're going to another district. And maybe that's about money. That's really important to us. That's one of the things, the levers that we can control, right? Like, and so have, trying to kind of be diagnostic about it. And so we both have exit interviews, but also some data over a couple of years that say, here's what's happening, right? Because you can put a lot of energy up front and you're trying really hard to fix that front door. But if we're not tracking sort of like, are they leaving real quick? And I would also really love to know, Barb, over time, is there a, is there a match or a mismatch that we want to pay attention to about who gets professional status? And where and why and are they feeling supported in different, are there different, do we need a different path or different levels of support to help some individuals? So those are some questions, a space of curiosity that I'm in as we move forward.
Yeah, and I think these are all great points. I should actually give some kudos to Lindsay because she has put together a memo for Meg Belcito, our Assistant Superintendent for Student Services and for Dr. Sawyer on exit interviewing and data that she has on our paraprofessionals this year. We certainly are thinking that important, important goals moving forward will be to establish a really deliberate parent-to-teacher pipeline. We continue to do that very informally. I meet with a lot of people one-on-one and now my name, both people come in and say, my neighbor told me you're the person to talk to. So all the neighbors out there, I am, and I would love to talk to you. But we'd love to start putting together some, you know, public events where we can invite people to really talk about all the paths into education so that we can attract more members of the community and get more people interested in this path. Because of course, we want to reflect our community and then some, so.
Right. No, it's lovely, all the different ways that we can think about helping people want to grow their career here in Shrewsbury and, you know, yeah, I know, I know we have, you know, mentoring for new educators and have had signed in the mentor, but if we were doing something similar for paraprofessionals who were asking, do you want, is, is part of your career path to move into a professional educator? Maybe not this year, but in a couple, how do we help build that bridge? So again, lots of kudos, apologies.
No.
No, this is, this is what our meetings are like. We get going on one topic and then we're all debating all the different sides of it. We understand.
Dr. Sawyer, any comments or questions?
I'll, I'll try to be brief. Thank you for the time and effort put into this really important work, first off, and giving of yourselves to make this, advance this work. Secondly, Ms. Malone just mentioned it, the internal pipeline piece, I think, is going to be a really important element for us to figure out how we can take folks who are coming into work for us to work with kids who don't have a credential, but who might decide or, and we may note potential or they may have interest in finding ways to formally get them so they can have a credential and, you know, people who are already within our organization. But I want to take that one step further and one thing I'd like for you to investigate when you reconvene next year. I've seen a little bit more recently about student organizations, future teacher organizations or clubs at the high school level. And if we're looking to, and one of the things that is really, I think, underscored this important work, those of you who watched the report, we were here last year and watched the report. Ms. Satterfield told a moving story about a student who sent a letter, who was a, a black student, who was the first teacher that was also black and how meaningful that was. Earlier in the year, when I was meeting with groups of students about our strategic planning work to get information, there was a student who happened to be Muslim and she happened to wear a hijab. And she mentioned that she saw a teacher who happens to be a Shrewsbury graduate, who happened to be a career changer and came and was hired in our district, but who happened to be part of the, the Black History Assembly and the, and the kind of a skit that they were putting on, like a game show skit. And this student just didn't have this teacher, but she said, I didn't know this teacher was in our school, but it was a teacher who happened to wear a hijab. And, and it was very meaningful for her. So this concept of our students seeing themselves, and I think earlier when we heard our retirees talk about how the teachers they had, in some cases at Shrewsbury High School, 30 some odd years ago, had such an impact on their lives. I think we have an opportunity to find teach, students of all types of backgrounds who might be interested in being thought about, like, what about, what about a career in education? And for some, they may not be what they are interested in. They may go in different directions, that's great. But we might have some future teachers if we just tap them on the shoulder and they might be in a classroom. We have a lot of our students who come back. And as our students become more diverse, we're going to get more and more diverse students who come back to be our teachers. That's going to take time, but we can, we can be purposeful about that in some ways. I'm excited about maybe trying to do that at the, at the high school student level as well. But again, thank you, really appreciate the, the great work and thanks for the presentation this evening.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you so much.
Okay, next on the agenda, we have our minutes from our meeting on May 24th, 2023. Are there any changes or corrections? There being none, they can be accepted as distributed. And we do need to go into executive session this evening for the purpose of addressing Massachusetts General Law 3821A7 to comply with or act under the authority of any general or special law or federal grant and aid requirements, purpose seven, open meeting law. Massachusetts General Law 3822FG for the purpose of reviewing, approving, and/or releasing executive session minutes. B for the purpose of addressing Massachusetts General Law 3821A3 to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect of the bargaining or litigating position of the public body in the chair, so declares, purpose three. The Shrewsbury Education Association Units A and/or B, the Shrewsbury Paraprofessional Association and/or the Cafeteria Workers Association, and C for the purpose of addressing Massachusetts General Law 30A21A2 to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel, non-union clerical and support staff and/or administrators, including the superintendent of schools, purpose two, where deliberation in an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body. And we will return to open session only for the purpose of adjournment for the evening. Do I have a motion to adjourn to executive session?
So moved.
Second. Roll call vote is required. Ms. Sharivapur?
Yes.
Mr. Wensky?
Aye.
Ms. Boucher?
Aye.
Ms. Heffernan?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Thank you and good night.